Good evening. I'd like to call together to call to order this meeting of the September 5th, 2024, City of Nashua Planning Board. First, may we have a roll call? Scott or Sam?
Sure.
Or Larry?
Mr. Chair, here's the roll call. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green.
Here.
And Alderman Patricia Klee.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from the August 1st, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Has any member of the Board had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes and is willing to make a motion with regard to acceptance? Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 1st, 2024, as written.
All right. Motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Two abstentions for the record, Mr. Green and Mr. Barley. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Communications. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Case A220039, Merritt Parkway. Various emails and communications have been received and provided to the Planning Board for review. Case number A240070, that's 8 State Street. The lighting plan has been provided and it's attached to the electronic file under the latest plan. That'll be explained to you by the engineer. There were some minor changes to Beard Street, case A240150, and also two letters of support for that project.
All right. Thank you, Scott. All right. Next item on the agenda, Report of Chair, Committee, and Liaison. Ms. Harper is not here, but anyone else have anything to report out? Okay, seeing none. We'll move along to our regular. And Scott, I apologize, I seem to not have the Planning Board procedure.
Okay. Take maybe Adam?
Oh. Didn't realize I had this. All right. Reading of the procedures. The procedure of the meeting and hearing are as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by the Chair, the Board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the Board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the stipulations recommended by staff. The Board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The Chair will then ask for testimony from the audience, and the Chair shall have the ability to limit the length of public testimony in the interest of time. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The Board may then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will begin the public meeting, at which time the Board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. We ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and to not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances of Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. Thank you for your interest and your courteous attention. I ask that you turn off your cell phones or set them to vibrate at this time. We are going to take things slightly out of order this evening. We're actually going to begin with Other Business, item number two. Referral from the Board of Aldermen regarding petition for street discontinuance. Sam, I don't know if staff wanted to speak on this at all, or if the applicant or petitioner was here directly to speak to that.
The applicant has representation here, but happy to give a brief update. This is relative to the Mohawk Tannery Project. As you, I believe, remember from part of the subdivision plan, there was a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way that was going to be sold to the applicant and is a part of that redevelopment plan. Brad Westgate is here representing the applicant. Should you have any further questions?
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett, 402 Amera Street, Suite 302 here in Nashua. I represent Blaylock Holdings LLC. Blaylock's been the applicant throughout this entire process for the Mohawk Tannery redevelopment. We appreciate the Board's time that you've been on this project on a number of occasions, both in reviewing our subdivision and site plan applications and on several recommendations through referrals to the Board of Aldermen. The Board will recall that on June 20th of this year, it approved three subdivision plans and the site plan for the project. Since that time, we've been continuing to work with city staff on various aspects of the project, including submission to the Board of Aldermen of additional proposed resolutions and petitions. Of course, we continue to work with the state and EPA on that permitting side. So among these petitions that we've submitted to the Board of Aldermen is this petition for street discontinuance. And I'll just very briefly give a few more thoughts and background on it. The Board recalls, as Mr. Durfee indicated, that part of the 40 acres project site includes 4.42 acres of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way. Not obviously the paved area, but the shoulders and some of the supporting land. That land becomes the entrance area into the project. There's no other way to get into the project without acquiring that parcel from the city. It also supports substantial infrastructure for the project and is actually the site for some of the multifamily residential units as well. As Mr. Durfee indicated, that lot, we call it the Parkway Parcel, it's shown as Lot 251 on your plans you've approved, is identical to the petition for the street discontinuance parcel that we show in our application. It's now up on the screen. So for the city to sell the property to us, the 4.42 acres, the street needs to be discontinued. So this part of the right-of-way has to be discontinued, otherwise it's still burdened, if you will, with the Memorial Parkway right-of-way concept. So part of this process involved the Board of Aldermen approving this year a master development agreement, which we have indicated has been finalized in form. The Board also approved purchase and sale agreement by which Blaylock can buy the 4.42 acre parcel after conditions are satisfied, including this petition for street discontinuance for a fair market value purchase price that is established in the agreement at $990,000. So for all that to become a reality, the street needs to be discontinued, this part of the right-of-way. The Board of Aldermen referred this at its first reading to the Planning Board. That's why we're here tonight. The petition sets forth these basic underlying circumstances, and we simply are asking that the Board, this Board here, provide a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen granting the petition for street discontinuance. It's simply part and parcel of one of the multiple steps we need to do to get the project to be a reality. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the Board? Okay. Seeing none. Quick question for Sam, just for clarification. You'd be looking for a motion from the Board for favorable recommendation regarding the petition for street discontinuance related to the VMP, this portion of the VMP?
That's correct.
Or something analogous to that phrasing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Westgate.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak in opposition or concern regarding this matter? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak in favor of this matter? All right. Seeing none. Last opportunity for the Board. Mr. Hudson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the petition requires that the city engineer, in addition to the Chair of the Planning Board, sign petition indicating whether we are or are not in favor of approval, just for the record. I am in favor of approval. So once this gets approved, we can sign off affirming that. Just wanted to share that.
Okay. No, I appreciate the clarification, Mr. Hudson. Further discussion from the Board? All right. Seeing none. I'd be willing to entertain a motion on the matter. Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'd like to put out a motion for favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen for the petition for street discontinuance for the portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way. It's been submitted.
Motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm just, I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to abstain, abstain just for the record, just consistent with my prior refuses on the substantive matters.
Understood. Mr. Barley abstains for the record. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move into our regular cases now. I would like to note for the record, I am going to recuse myself from the first case being heard this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. So up next on the agenda, we have case number A22-0039 under old business site plans. Merritt Place LLC owner requesting site plan approval for the development of 11 four-unit townhomes with associated site improvements. This property is located to 8 Merritt Parkway, zoned suburban residence and flexible use overlay district in Ward 5. As this application, has the Board had continued review and is someone prepared to make a motion that the application is complete and that the Board is ready to accept jurisdiction?
Mr. Leclair?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. And just before the applicant begins with their presentation, I just wanted to briefly, for the benefit of everyone sitting in the audience, just speak for one moment about sort of the procedural history here, so everybody understands how it is that we arrived to where we are tonight. So in late 2022, the Planning Board heard this case. The application was ultimately approved by the Planning Board. That approval was appealed to the New Hampshire Superior Court after a proceeding that lasted some time. The Superior Court ultimately reversed the decision of the Planning Board, and very specifically, although there were a number of issues that were before the Superior Court, the basis for reversal was ultimately the failure of the applicant's request and the Board to consider a specific waiver with respect to multifamily housing. So the consequence then of the reversal was that the Superior Court remanded the case to the Planning Board. So we are effectively starting, you know, the case has been handed back to us with, you know, the Superior Court saying, we want you to rehear essentially this case based on the decision of the Superior Court. So we are sort of jumping back into the flow of the original process. So I just wanted, again, for everyone's benefit to convey that. And then for the benefit of the applicant, obviously, as you're well aware, we had multiple hearings on this back in 2022. Again, I understand that there's obviously some very specific issues that you'll want to address in terms of where we left off last time, but I do think it's probably fair and appropriate to have a more limited presentation, at least initially, on the more specific issues that are outstanding. So apologies for that introduction, but I thought that might be helpful, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. My name is John Cronin. I'm an attorney of offices in Manchester with Cronin, Bisson, and Zalinski. We have a statewide land use practice. I appeared here many moons ago, but my practice used to be when I had a Nashua case, to send it to my friend Jerry Prunier. So this is not a home game for me, if you will, but I appear in Manchester and other communities regularly. I agree with the Chairman's comments, and when I first looked at this case, I said it would be a very interesting bar review question. A lot of different issues that float through it, a lot of different resolutions. And as the Chairman stated, the central issue on the remand is the failure to request a multifamily waiver for multifamily use. Your ordinance, Innovative Land Use Control, vests in the Planning Board, as you know, a lot of power. You have the power to grant waivers for issues that traditionally, under a traditional ordinance, may have to go to the ZBA for variance release. It's also unusual about your ordinance is your waiver standard adopts the five criteria of the variance. So essentially, you're acting as a quasi-type zoning board, where in most cases with Innovative Land Use Control, the waiver sticks with the standard waiver provisions rather than the five criteria. Nevertheless, I'm prepared to address all of the criteria of those issues. There was also the issue with respect to the waiver for age. There's an age issue here where multifamily housing for the elderly is permitted in this zone. We believe the issue with location has been resolved. Court was very clear in its direction there, saying that this type of use is anywhere allowed in this particular district and not confined to one street or the other. We also believe the height issue was resolved. We can touch on it briefly, but the proposed townhouses here, they meet your height requirements in terms of feet, but as opposed to the story where a half-story above what the zoning ordinance calls for. In terms of the history, the staff report spelled it out well. Mr. Durfee took time and went through it with us. Again, very complicated. I appreciate his spending the time with us to really take us through what was required so that we could submit the appropriate applications for you. We've submitted the narratives to support the two waivers that are requested, addressing the five criteria. And to stay consistent with the Chairman's instructions, I'll deviate from a full presentation and turn it over to Paul Chisholm, who can give you the highlights. He's lived this since the beginning, and I'll ask him, and then I'll return to address the criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, and good evening, everybody. For the record, Paul Chisholm with Keach Norstrom Associates. We are the engineers and surveyors of record for the project. Sam, if you don't mind throwing up the presentation plan that's now on the screen in front of you, I think it would just be wise to just very briefly go back over the project in general and just touch on exactly what it is. So again, this is a townhouse development. It's a campus-style layout. There's 11 buildings with four units each. This is the last undeveloped parcel in all of the FUOD, as well as the mixed-use village, which is a small portion of the Flex Use Overlay District running alongside Main Dunstable, Connet, and Buck Meadow. This plan effectively brings Mangerian Lane to life. It kind of exists from previous plans and concept plans and things like that, dating all the way back to the late 90s. The new driveways and parking areas bring access to all of these units. Everything will have city utilities in terms of, you know, sewer, water, gas, electric, everything underground. Since we were here last, we did receive our Alteration of Terrain permit and all the other state permits we needed, including a sewer connection permit. Obviously, with that goes great consideration in terms of many environmental considerations, sewer capacity, impervious coverage, stormwater management, and of course, wildlife, which has been a big focus of the state in more recent years. So a lot of things were decided and reviewed by the appropriate professionals and approved by the appropriate professionals at that time. As John mentioned, you know, he's really going to speak more towards what I'll call the Flex Use Overlay District waivers, which have that relatively unusual criteria. Along with this, we also do have a more typical site plan waiver request before you that was actually submitted and approved with the last project back in 2022, and that's for Land Use Code 19279 EE. Again, it's a fairly common one. What that is in regards to is, you know, identifying all existing features within 1,000 feet of the site. Certainly, we've done enough to expand on boundaries where we need to in terms of wetlands and sewer connections and things along that nature. So happy to talk about that more. The second piece, which is a different type of, I guess, deviation from what's technically allowed in the ordinance under the site suitability report, is actually speaks to kind of the form of the building, so dimensional things, the building height issue that we're talking about. As John mentioned, we did have what I'll call the FUOD waiver style approval on that last time around. That was not contended in the court. We feel that it still stands. However, in, you know, talking with staff and talking with the applicant, just trying to keep this thing as thorough and airtight as possible, anything that may slow us down, we're kind of seeking relief for that. That's one of those items. That site suitability report speaks to, again, the building height in terms of stories, not in terms of feet. We're under that 35-foot threshold. And the second part of that site suitability report actually speaks to density. That's one of the things in 19025 that actually can be specifically altered as a result. The density in this case, because this is a condo parcel, it's on basically, I think the overall property's a little bit over 20 acres, but the condo piece is about eight. The density on just this condo piece is about 7.07 units per acre. Now, the Flex Use Overlay District doesn't actually speak anything about density. The only thing that mentions density at all is the underlying R30 zone, which doesn't allow that type of density. Obviously, the Flex Use Overlay District did allow 60 elderly housing units in the mixed-use village specifically. It didn't necessarily say, you know, you need to get relief for anything to put them wherever and orient them however you want to. There's a little bit of history on this as well. In 1999, and Sam, before I get into this a little bit, if you don't mind pulling up what I've called Exhibit B as a PDF, it is a 1999 approved plan. This is the Colony Club development here on June 3rd, 1999. This was approved by the Nashua Planning Board. What you see on this plan here is a three-story, 60-unit, single building. This was approved with no site suitability report. It was approved with no waivers. There were no variances at the time. It was just approved by the Planning Board and allowed to go forward without any relief whatsoever. Along with that, Sam, is Exhibit C, which is basically the meeting minutes from that. Again, that just kind of shows that it doesn't speak to any relief whatsoever that was required for that. I believe, and what the applicant believes, is that really, this was, in 1999, it was shortly after the Aldermen created the Flex Use Overlay District and gave power to the Planning Board to make modifications. They certainly did that in this case. What we are asking for in terms of the townhouse development is certainly less intense than a 60-unit, three-story building that has a 22,000 square foot footprint, okay? Sam, if you don't mind going back to our site plan there. So again, with the two Flex Use Overlay District waivers that John will get into in a little bit, and the site suitability report speaking to the dimensional things, density, again, just to be sure that we're covering our bases, the applicant maintains that we may not necessarily need that for approval, but just to be very sure, so we don't have any hiccups in court again, we have submitted that for approval and for your consideration as well. We have gone through the staff report that Sam has prepared. We take no exception to any of the stipulations proposed or anything that's written in there at all. And there are certainly a couple minor plan cleanup things that we will address. I think the biggest thing was taking another look and adding some additional street trees and things like that around the property. Kind of a late add for us was a letter from Mr. Kenneth Leva from Sotheby's Realty. He wrote a nice letter here, and Sam, I didn't label it as anything, I think it's just called Sotheby's Letter. I have multiple copies if you folks would like some, but basically, Kenneth here basically wrote a letter analyzing this from a market perspective, speaking of valuations. In the end, he concludes that on his education, training, and 20-plus years of experience as a licensed real estate professional focused in the Nashville market, it's his opinion that the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished in any way with this site plan being approved and the waivers granted. So again, I do have copies for the record.
Yeah, we'll take the record.
Any of you would like some, I do have extra copies for you as well. And so, again, I think that's really kind of the nuts and bolts of the site plan itself. I'm sure a lot of you are very familiar with it. There was a lot of discussion through the time, at the time in 2022. At this point, I think it would be wise for John to come up here and kind of walk you through really the main reason why we're here, which is the Flex Use Overlay District waivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. With the court, we wanted some detail on the five criteria. I'll spend a few minutes to address those. I'll address them together, and I will incorporate arguments on both, if that's acceptable to the Board. And the first question on the variance prong is whether or not granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This ordinance is an Innovative Land Use Control ordinance, which its whole foundation is based on flexibility in mixed uses. There is residential uses that are allowed in this zone and contemplated in this zone. In fact, many of them have been built, although they're elderly. There were other proposals that were approved for other residential uses. The use that's being proposed here is residential. The current standard is announced in a case of Farrar versus Keen. It talks about that standard, and how does somebody prove it? And there's two ways. One, will the variance, if granted, alter the essential character of the neighborhood in a marked or substantial way? And the second, if the variance is granted, will it impact negatively public health, safety, and welfare? When you look at this particular neighborhood, how it's situated, you have the commercial buildings, which are occupied by multiple tenants. And this particular site is unique in the sense that it sits really in the middle of an already developed site. It has no visibility from the main road. Very literally shouldn't say no limited visibility, and the access isn't what you would expect if you were a commercial developer. The frontage for this particular site is really created by the developer internally, but if you look up the side streets and the way to get there, first thing any commercial type of developer would want to see is the use, right? Any Walgreens, CVS, restaurant, they want people to see it, and they want an easy way to get to it. And anyone that's looked at sites and various things, we know that sites at lights are generally more valuable and more in demand than those that are remote. This particular site also abuts some wetlands that separate this particular site and the residential homes to the rear. One of the things in looking at this and the character of the neighborhood, did a drive through those, that neighborhood, some nice houses in the back there, and separated substantially by the wetlands and the growth that's between them. That's an area that's not going to be disturbed or impacted ever. And when I looked at your ordinance, I said, I wonder what Nashua calls for in terms of separation of zones. For example, if I want to put a residential use next to a commercial or an industrial use. In many communities, you see that distance being 100-foot buffer, maybe 40 or 50 feet have to be landscaped. In your case, dividing, say, two of the most incompatible uses, all you would require is a 40-foot landscaped buffer. In this case, the distance from the buildings here to the nearest house is approximately 350 feet, almost 10 times the distance. So that's pretty significant when you look at it for the character of the neighborhood. Whoever was in this neighborhood and looked at it, expected this particular property as a whole, including all the other condominium units, would be developed, and there would be a number of residential properties on there. So we think, based on the plan, based on how it's configured, putting townhouses in there, which are very much in-demand type of use, in Nashua, my understanding is the housing study calls for needs for all types of housing, particular smaller units or smaller places for people to live, and this provides an attractive, in-demand type of setting. Consistent and a- Consistent, and it provides a nice transitional zone between the residences in the back and the commercial in the front. It also provides rooftops and pocketbooks to patronize those commercial folks that are already situated in that particular development. When you look at the next prong, it talks about the public interest. The Farrar court said that the standard would be essentially the same, so I won't repeat it. It's basically, will the character of the neighborhood change in a marked way, or will there be any change to public health, safety, and welfare? Certainly, folks that live in townhouses create no different impacts from public safety, health, and welfare than people that would live in a large, single-family home or a small, single-family home. It's a well-recognized type of housing. It survives well both in Nashua and throughout Southern New Hampshire. So, we meet that particular prong. The next prong in the balancing test is the substantial justice. That's a subjective prong, where there's really no objective criteria to determine it. It's up to the board to put the weights on the balance and see how it tips. In this case, we think it falls heavily in favor of the applicant. The question is, if the variances aren't granted, or the waivers, as you call them in your ordinance, what will the harm be to the applicant? Harm to the applicant will have a piece of property that's currently unproductive, it's been sitting vacant for a long time, it's really not suitable or feasible for alternative types of developments, and it deprives them of the opportunity to do something that's much in need and consistent with the existing neighborhood and the development. What will the harm to the public be? I don't see any. The public will benefit from an increased tax base. Those homes would be nice. You've got a number of them there that will generate some taxes. Also, it will provide opportunities and patronage for the commercial folks that are there on site, will allow them to have people that will come in and patronize their various shops. And most importantly, it will provide new, clean, affordable places for people to live. And I say affordable, and that's compared to living in a 4,000-square-foot house or a 3,000-square-foot new house. Certainly, new townhouses are going to be available at a much lower rate than a new, larger home, and provide ample opportunity for folks for living. In terms of the layout, there are driveways and access, and you'll see the internal road network and the spacing, all done to meet current building standards, safety standards for traffic, and interior parking lot movements. One of the next characteristics is if the variances are granted, will it diminish the value of surrounding properties? Hard to imagine in a case like this, and I think it's self-evident that you get new housing in an area rather than a rough, unproductive piece of land, or if you put a restaurant, if anyone would be interested, or a Walgreens. I could see if someone was looking at the back of a Walgreens or a restaurant, I might say that would impair their value, but this is about as compatible it gets, notwithstanding the distance of being, you know, 350 feet or more away from this particular development. Just to be on the safe side and to create a record, we did obtain a professional opinion that's in the record that concludes that if these waivers in the form of variances are granted, it will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. The next piece is the hardship piece, and the court was interested in hearing more details about the land as opposed to the ordinance. And I think the big thing here with respect to the hardship is the character of the land, right? Its visibility, its access, its proximity, its one piece that's existing in a built-out condominium that makes it different. The way that you get to it, the way that you see it, the way it can be developed and the compatible uses, all make it unique. Also, if you look at alternative development in that site that you were going to do, say for example, if single-family homes were feasible, you'd have a lot more disturbance on the site than you would in this particular development. The hardship standard in olden days was if you could graze a cow on the land, you didn't meet the hardship test. But one of your natives here, Sherman Horton, who was probably regarded as one of the best real estate lawyers and one of the few that went from practice to the Supreme Court, wrote a dissenting opinion in the Gray Rocks case. And he said at that particular time that the hardship standard in New Hampshire was confiscatory and unreasonable. And he articulated, and he was a minority, and said that we need to change this standard because it's unfair to property owners here in the live-free-or-die state, where you should have the opportunity to develop your property as you see fit, subject to reasonable zoning ordinances and planning regulations. And although he didn't have the majority of the court in the Gray Rocks decision, over the next several years, the hardship standard was in flux. And it kind of settled in in simplex, which I'm sure you hear from time to time, and certainly the folks on the zoning board hear it regularly. And the import of simplexes would really change the standard markedly to make it a reasonable test. The first thing that we should look at in a hardship standard is the proposed use reasonable under all of the circumstances. I think everyone that's looked at this and opined on it thinks that townhouse use for this particular site makes a lot of sense in an area where housing of this type and kind is necessary. And then if you look for the other factors of the conditions, we certainly meet this. If you went around this whole neighborhood and looked, you couldn't find another property that's like this, that has the same features, the same restrictions, and the same impediments to development. So, we believe that we meet that test in all respects. Just going to take a moment to talk about age, because we do have the request to have this housing be not age-restricted. In 1968, the federal government adopted the Fair Housing Acts. And although not specifically stated as one of the criteria, the cases and the reporting out of that act is that you can't discriminate based on age, either in development or rental or sale. So, if I had a property to sell, I could make a decision and say, you look too old, I think we should have young people in this neighborhood. Or I couldn't say, you're too young, we want old people in this neighborhood. About two decades later, the federal legislature looked at it and said, we want to carve out an exception to fair housing, to allow old folks, if they choose to, to live in an isolated development where they don't have to worry about baby carriages and maybe kids and other things that may not be attractive to them at the later stages in life. And there's a number of different classifications of elderly, assisted living, over 55, 62, and many of them require amenities such as dining facilities or nursing care. This particular site certainly doesn't lend itself to that type of elderly housing. And I think nobody can say that the age of the occupant has any bearing on health, safety, or welfare, or should be a concern to the government. I get it that in zoning, and when you do master planning, it's nice to identify areas where you might like certain things, to have a need or a special need for it, but the housing report says this type of housing, the elderly, is not needed as much as general units. So, that's just something to think about in the second request that we had for the, I'll call it the waiver variance, technically a waiver, but same criteria as the variance. So, I believe that we meet all of the legal criteria for you to vote favorably on these requests this evening. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have, and certainly Paul, who has a much broader knowledge of the plan and the history than I do, will be happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And then I will start with a question. I'm not sure if other board members may have questions, but as to the waiver for the age-restricted housing in particular, I'm wondering if you could just sort of reiterate or confirm for me the nature of the hardship component, you know, specifically the, you know, the standard as you cite from the statute about the, you know, the owing to the special conditions on the property. I think you, and I apologize if I, you know, didn't hear appropriately, but I think you illustrated some of those specific conditions as it relates to, you know, commercial use versus residential use. So, I was wondering if you could just touch on specifically, you know, the age-restricted housing and the, and the conditions of the property, as you see being, you know, relevant for that hardship test.
Yeah. In terms of this site, you're looking at this island in the middle of a developed commercial site with commercial around it. It's already there, it's existing, it's part of the land. It's not one of these remote places with a lot of land and places for amenities for elderly people. Certainly also doesn't have the configuration to support a dining facility or any of those sorts of things, or nursing care. And that would be based mainly on the configuration of the property. Certainly, you might find that you'll get some elderly folks that will choose to live here, and that certainly would be their right. As many of these townhouses, as they get occupied by elderly folks, you know, they pay winter in Florida or someplace a little bit warmer, or go back and forth. But clearly, when you look at the hardship relating to the elderly piece, this site is not well-suited for an elderly development based on its physical characteristics.
Yep.
Adam, I'm going to, I'm going to touch on that a little bit too, just to supplement what John said. You know, really doing a deep dive on the code here. So, you know, one of the things that the judge, and kind of had that same question that you had, right, that same line of thinking, and, and I think the phrase that was put in there is reasonable turn versus maximum return, was kind of part of that argument as well. In terms of the elderly housing itself, right, the only style of elderly housing that's allowed strictly by the book is single-family detached in this location on this lot. You know, quite frankly, single-family doesn't make sense. I don't know of any location in Nashua, I don't know of any location really in general, where you drive through a commercial parking lot and you drive into the middle of a commercial property to access your single-family home. You see it more with garden-style apartments, you see it more with commercial on the first floor, residential above, you see it more with different types of development. There's nothing here to suggest that a successful project will be had by basically narrowing us down into, not approving these things, narrowing us down into doing a single-family in the middle of a commercial development. There's no case, test case for that, right? So, I would contend that basically you can't assume that there's any previous or other development that would suggest that not only will you get a reasonable return, you might not get a return positive at all in that situation. So, that's something to consider. On the flip side of that, because there's kind of, you can almost use that against you on the multifamily waiver request on that, right? Why is that reasonable here then? Because now we have the second waiver request. So, it's reasonable in the sense of the multifamily, because when you go through and you look, again, doing a little bit deeper dive on the code than just surface level here, right? The FUOD was created, all the single-family homes that exist, all the neighborhoods that are back there, they have the look and feel of an R9 development. That's because the dimensional standards, right, that were required or allowed in the FUOD for single-family lots to be created are 9,000 square feet of lot area, 10-foot side yard setbacks, 25 year, rear yard setbacks, 25 front setbacks, a lot width of 75 feet, a lot depth of 90 feet, and accessory structures six feet from all lines. That matches up almost verbatim with an R9 development. You drive through Cherrywood, those houses are laid out, you don't know you're in an R30, you think you're in an R9 just by the look and the feel of it, right? What's allowed in R9 for elderly? And elderly in R9 is allowed to be actually in the townhouse form. So, there's a reasonable argument to be made on both cases, kind of by, number one, by the book in terms of the actual age restriction, that you, you know, it has to be single-family, but really, the look and feel of everything else around it makes it want to be actually in the townhouse style. So, I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Stay here, Paul, just in case. Paul, let me click.
Thank you. Personally, I don't like age-restricted housing because I, I think in the end it hurts the city, but there's also another aspect of age restriction that I think some developers don't like. Some developers like because it, because of other things, but it also, you have to build smaller. So, these townhouses that you want to build, they're bigger than the, is it 800 square feet that you have for age-restricted housing you can only build? Am I correct? 800 square feet? So, that would be another reason why you would not want to build age-restricted, correct?
I suppose. You know, I believe if I remember correctly, and please don't quote me on this, I think they're about 1,800 square feet.
1,800 square feet, okay.
Based in these townhouses.
I got the eight right.
The difference being with that, though, the other side of that is, you know, being condensed together versus separate buildings, every building that's separate needs a certain distance between it for fire safety code, life safety, things like that. You end up with a more spread-out development. You know, we felt that four was certainly a good number, grouping things together, kind of keeping the buildings no bigger than any building that's, you know, some of the bigger buildings out there already, right? So, it was kind of that good balance of everything there. Also, obviously protecting, you know, the wetlands that exist out there and all the environmental sensitivities that exist, that was obviously a very key component of the underlying, you know, and it was why the FUOD was created and allowed things to be more condensed. So, yeah, with that, yeah, smaller, but that also means that they're smaller, but kind of more spread out in a way. Does that make sense to the more of it?
I guess the point that I'm trying to make is if you had to go with age-restricted, if they didn't give you that variance, you would, the, the age-restricted would have a much smaller...
Yes, yeah.
...square footage than if you went with a non-age-restricted, which is going to limit your unit size.
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
And I think you're right, it's somewhere around that 800 square foot.
I think it's 800 square feet for elderly versus non-age-restricted. Your non-age-restricted, you could have bigger units, more bedrooms, et cetera. So, that's just for us to keep in mind also, it's going to make you a, you're going to have a larger unit, is, I'm just saying this for the board's sake as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Still clear?
Just with regard to the site plan, I just want to make 100% clear, there are no changes to the site plan since the previous submission.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. None of the thing has changed. Again, in Sam and staff's staff report here, they asked for a couple of things that are pretty minor modifications. The biggest thing was, again, adding in some additional landscaping. So, there will be some minor, one of the conditions, I believe, is just, you know, minor plan modifications and things like that. That's the type of stuff we're talking about. We're not moving building locations, we're not moving utilities, we're not moving the other stuff. It's just really some very, very minor things, and none of that has happened yet. The plans that you have in front of you are the plans that you saw in 2022.
Good. The only question I had, is there any, you mentioned the, the larger housing development that was really kind of on the other side at Conant that was submitted. Has there ever been site plans submitted for this site?
Site plan consisting of residential at all?
Of anything?
No, no, not on this site. It's just always, I mean, nothing, I think there was a Hannaford store on this condo parcel in particular years back. Before that, I'm not sure, but no, to my knowledge, I don't think any houses have ever been proposed on this particular lot.
Yeah, I guess my question, and I don't know, Scott, or Sam, if you guys have done any research, has there been any applications of commercial type that have been submitted that have not gone through the planning, that have been denied?
For this site?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point?
So, just to clarify, so there's never been any site plan, so this was built, the FUOD was done in 89?
I believe so, or thereabouts, yes.
And the site's been dormant, and nobody's taken a shot at developing it since 1989?
To my understanding, that is correct. Yeah, this particular lot in this area has not received an approval of commercial, residential of any kind, to my knowledge.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to now move into taking public testimony. At least to start with, I'm going to set a timetable of 45 minutes to hear that testimony. And I just want to note, so that everyone understands, we received, you know, voluminous written public comment, all the planning board members received that, those comments in advance, those are in the record. So, nobody needs to feel compelled to, you know, read an email for the record. For example, we have all of that on the record, everyone's had an opportunity to review that. As I did with the applicant, I would ask everyone to try to, you know, focus their testimony to the extent they have it, to the issues that are at hand, which are specifically...
to the extent they have it, to the issues that are at hand, which are specifically, you know, the five criteria that the applicant just went through in terms of the, the particular waivers they're requesting. And with that in mind, I would just ask that, for those who wanna speak, if you could please just make a, make a line behind the podium and just come up one by one. So, for those wishing to speak in opposition and concerned, whoever wants to start, please come forward. Alder McClellan's reminding me, if you could please state your name and address for the record before you start speaking, just so we can get that on the recording.
My name is Santosh Salvi, I live in Porozeli Alen.
I can start my... Yes, go ahead, please.
Again, my name is Santosh Salvi, I'm living in Nashua since 1998 in this neighborhood. Over past 25 years, I have witnessed the development of our community, and I commend the planning board for its excellent work in developing the Maplewood area and its surrounding. I'm deeply disappointed by the planning board decision to consider approving the applicant's Varian's request for the second time in a row, when we came to know about this just before Labor Day weekend. Very busy weekend, the schools are starting, the timing was very bad, and this is happening second time in a row. I don't know, my community, we have 200 houses, we pay lots of taxes, we are law-abiding citizens, why we are getting treated twice in a row of putting this kind of notice on the Conant Street and the Merritt Parkway just before the long weekend? I don't know, two days in a row definitely is questionable. Last time, we went through a community hearing, the board approves the Varian's and the, Varian's basically report, applicant's request, we went to the Superior Court. We are busy people, we have to take care of the family, we are not experts, we don't have the attorney, we have to raise the funding to support this activity. But we do care about the neighborhood, we do care about our city. And I'm expecting, you all are professionals, you have seen the area, it is not a rocket science that this is the last parcel, we should abide whatever the 200-plus houses we have in the neighborhood. We cannot just ruin the area by adding a multifamily, basically multifamily properties in that area. Now, I'm going to stick to, I have submitted a bunch of documents to the planning board, you have seen lots of emails from everyone. So, I will stick to the five criteria right now. The first one is public interest. Applicant is developing a land right next to, almost very close to senior living house. We have 16 senior living resident, they are coming from all over US, they consider Nashua is their retirement life, they want to do it. They must have put lots of their life savings into the property. Now, they are getting stressed out because they don't have a job, that is, that is the only asset they have. And right in front of them, we are building 44 multifamilies. The cost of those multifamily will be way less than those 16 independent condos. Their, their price of the house condos will definitely go down. Now, they are retirees, they don't have a way to make any money. So, we are basically forcing them to go to the financial stress. There are lots of immigrant families all around the property, they are all young with two, three kids, they are buying their first home, that is their only assets. Now, we are putting lots of apartment multifamily over there, and they will be going to the financial stress, they already have lots of loans, they are trying to raise the kids. I don't think the planning board need to basically add more hassles to their life. So, when it comes to the public interest, I only see the interest of the developer to earn more money on the investment. He bought, he bought the property in 2022, he knew exactly what are the limitations, what kind of properties he can develop, he can develop the retail, he can develop the commercial, he can develop the senior living. He bought that property at that price with that limitation. So, who is going to get benefit out of this development? Only one person. So, I really do not understand, because I'm not expert like you guys. I'm a small business owner, I'm IT guy. But when I looked at the documents, and I called City Office multiple time, what they are telling me, oh, I just say I don't see any kind of amendments, because in any documents, I'm a system person, previous application and the current application should have amendments. I get the response from the city that they have just adjust technicality. Now, is that the discussion between the planning board and the builder? And the common people cannot even understand what are the changes done in the document? Lawyers, they understand it, they are getting paid for that. We are not getting paid for this service, we have a lot of other things to do, we do care about the community, and that's the reason we are here. So, public interest definitely is going, I'm really slashing it down. The second one, the spirit of audience is absurd. The planning board is considering approving the applicant's request. Now, we are trying to build a multifamily over there. If I run into the laws in the business, can you allow me to build a multifamily on my house? You won't, because I'm a single person, I don't have that kind of a strength. You guys will show me these five different principles, and you will just reject my application. Builder does have a lot of support with them, and they can basically work with it. So, if you are going to allow me to build a multifamily on my house so that I can have a good income coming out of my house, I don't care about my neighborhoods, there will be lots of cars going in, same principle right now, thinking about building one multifamily and 44 multifamilies, multiply by that 44 times. Substantial justice is done. Applicant has provided no financial data or expert analysis suggesting that they cannot realize the reasonable return on their investment. I have not seen in any of the reports, at least in the agenda item. The applicant still can build, develop the property as a commercial, as a, as a retail or a senior house development. I can also think about, because I know that nobody, everybody wants to make money, every businessman want to do that, they can think about duplex, so which will be basically not a multifamily, but a decent-sized houses, number of our, our units might be less, still the developer can make the money. But the greediness needs to be stopped, and that is what I'm expecting from the planning board. And that's their duty as per my knowledge. The value of the surrounding properties are not diminishing, I have already covered that. To date, Southwest Corner has followed the goal of a land use code and a FUD, flexible use overlay district, with hundreds of homes constructed under the vision of semi-rural, low-density neighborhood. Now, we are just having the last parcel of the lot, and we are just putting 44 units right on our face. That is really not a good thing from the city side for the law-abiding citizens who are working hard for their residence, and they are paying the taxes. The last one, which I'm talking about, is a literal enforcement of the audience would result in unnecessary hardship. I've covered that, but I will repeat a few sentences. The applicant purchased this property with fully aware of restrictions in place. As a professional, they should understand the pros and cons of buying this lot. The community should not bear the burden of their desire to increase the profit. Applicants has no ground to claim the hardship. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Leatherman, I have property at 6 Cherrywood Drive, and yes, I was the person who actually appealed the decision last time. I'm, there's a lot of issues around this situation. We've been, I've been here multiple times, there's a lot of complexity around this. So, I'm gonna really focus on probably two things, and you addressed some of them already. The court decided to repeal this first decision based on two reasons. One, is this a mixed multifamily location? The court, and I can, the documents are here, you can read those, the court stated in the flexible use district in R30, multifamily property is not allowed. That's the reason why Judge Corbin, in her decision, said no. That's why she denied your, kind of reversed the decision. Second, hardship. And so she just mentioned a number of reasons why hardship. And the applicant's lawyer talked about hardship. If you can really coincide, hardship was because of, and she mentioned it in the, in her all case, that the applicant did not show any hardship. Now, I think we also, you asked some questions earlier in the documents, what is hardship? The one piece they mentioned, which I understand, there's no frontage. Well, the variances are really going from what the use can be today to something new. I would hate to tell the seven, I think it's like seven or eight businesses that have been successful businesses for over 20 years in that location that do not have hard, do not have frontage, they're on the side sheets, side streets. I've been in my property for 20 years, okay? I've, all the businesses there have been very successful, have been in business. So, I don't see that as a hardship that they can't have frontage for a business in that location. And last thing I wanna mention is hardship, as well as mixed multifamily using, the court case has already been, decision has been brought down from a court, Superior Court, which is the Oversight Committee for Zoning Boards across the state, has already said these two things, denied decision. So, I would hate to see the same kind of example going back and making a decision. So, I kind of respectfully understand, if there's been changes to this, that's not multifamily, and there is a hardship, you need to consider that when you're making your decision. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I just, just for the record...
Yes.
Respectfully, I think that the decision was a bit different than as you outlined, so that, and I have it in front of me right now. So, just to clarify...
Yes.
The judge indicated that the, that the error by the planning board was failing to take into account a waiver request for multifamily housing. So, the Superior Court judge did not say that the planning board is prohibited from considering such a waiver. So, I just wanted to clarify that point, because I do think that's an important distinction.
That's, shall I, shall I read it to you? Because that's not, that's not, because the ordinance for the, for land use, land use code...
Yeah, I read the decision, I'm aware of what it says. I just wanted to clarify that, because the, because the sense of implication was that the planning board is prohibited from considering a waiver request for multifamily housing for this property, that's not what the court said. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. I do wanna follow up on one comment that was mentioned earlier, and Mr. Leclaire, you mentioned about, why is this property not been issued? Again, I've been, had a history of this. Hannaford did own the property, and they, when they, when this whole development was set up 25 years ago, they were one of the members in this condo association, the condo association being a business condo association, so let's not confuse residential as a business, all the other locations are, are businesses. So, they purchased this, they tried to build a property larger, they sat on the property for years. They did nothing for years until the applicant purchased the property, knowing that it had this kind of, there was a mixed-use district and what should, what can be built there. That's the reason why we sat back for that many years. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you, Board members. My name is Diane Robinson, 6 Carnation Circle in the Maplewood complex. Many of our walking paths go past there, and can you please, if you can, put the picture up of the development? Lovely development, traffic from this exits onto 101A as it goes through, it also will go through Conant, and anyone who goes to the mall will now take Searl's Road across, or they'll cut through Cherrywood, or through Buck Meadow. We've already been impacted by gaining a lovely, and it is very lovely, new school at the end of Buck Meadow with all the buses, and you're going to add approximately 88 cars if you have 44 residences, 11 buildings times four residences each. If there are two working people in there, two cars each, so 88 cars you're adding, and I've yet to see a traffic plan for this. Additionally, they stated it would be more impactful if they put houses in, would not necessarily be more impactful, and the houses would increase and keep the value of the neighborhood area versus townhomes in the area. I am sure, sorry, my phone's on silent, but obviously it's not being silent.
I think it's the, the alarm for the chat, for the man that's missing.
Yeah, but, now let's make change of that. Anyhow, if you have these houses in here with that, they're decreased in value. I know that the esteemed lawyer had someone that appraised and said property values will not go down, I can probably found just as many appraisers that will say, yes, property values will go down. And I really don't want my property value to go down. Eventually, that's gonna be my retirement. Thank you for considering these things.
Good evening, everybody. Hello, Dan. I'm not gonna cover everything that they said, but I'm gonna say a few things, historical plan that the engineer mentioned.
Can you quickly just say your name and address?
Yeah, Anand Panwakar, I'm from 26 Cherrywood Drive.
Thank you.
So, the engineer talked about the historical plan that was not, that was approved but not built or something. That really has no bearing on this case, this is a separate site, separate plan submission. They also, their application also had Article 190-20 states that they can use 190-25 for variance. However, the 190-20 also states that in case of a conflict with 190-25, 190-20 shall rule, which means that the zoning that's dictated by 190-20 should be applicable, not the variance requirement given by 190-25. Zoning law states that all variances shall be in keeping with the intent of the zoning. Now, the zoning, the city's zoning commission developed the zoning plan, there was a vision to that plan. If somebody buys some property within a zone area and applies for variance, say, I want to build a 10-story high-rise there, that's not gonna be approved, because that's not sitting with the city's vision of the area. The same way, I think it's very disrespectful of the developer to buy this property, knowing all the current regulations and zoning laws, come to you guys and say, well, you guys can develop whatever zoning laws you want, but I'm gonna come in and ask for variance, get it and build it what I want. I think that should be considered. There is no need for separation from this property, from the commercial property to the residential property, because there is already a buffer. As the applicant said, there is a wetland, there is a creek running through, there is a wetland there, so there is no need to build a transitional property. Let's build what's being approved there, or what's been zoned there, which will be single-family or age-restricted. Housing need. The applicant said that, oh, there is a housing need in the city, the reports said that, whatever reports. Yes, there is a housing need, I know, there are a lot of houses needed. However, city also knows this, mayor, you guys, the zoning commission knows this, you have already appropriated proper areas for multifamily housing. You have already appropriated proper areas for multi-family housing. There are rules there. I went to the city website, you can go right now and look. There are sites, there are cities asking developers to come in and build multi-family housing. I request the developer to go and build their property there because that will be very efficient use of city property and their resources. I don't see why they should come into a zone or land that is zoned for age-restricted, single-family housing and build a multi-family unit there for non-age-restricted. Thank you.
My name is Paula Johnson. I live at 15 Westbourne Drive. I'm kind of glad there's no three-minute rule here like it is with the Board of Ed and the Board of Alderman because people would be lining up and having to restart their speeches again. First of all, I think this is really sad, what's happening here. It was supposed to be age-restricted, they say age-restricted, excuse me, I'm not an elderly person, I classify as a senior and 55 housing plus, it's very good for Nashua because with 55-plus housing, you would open up more of the single-family homes so people would be able to come here and buy.
I'm sorry. Can you, can you address the comments to the board, please?
Okay, that's okay. I'm sorry. I just want to let them know that I'm not one of these elderly people. We are senior citizens now. We are not elderly people. So please, you know, let's be politically correct here. First of all, I think it's really sad what we've done here because we're taking property that could be age-restricted, a 55-plus community, and we're turning it into townhouses. Do we have the pictures of what they, actually these townhouses are going to look like? Do we have that? I really would like everybody to see what these buildings are going to look like. Oh, that to me looks like an apartment building. That does not look like a townhouse because I did look up on my phone while we were talking about townhouses, what a townhouse really looks like more. It's more like a row house versus that. That to me looks like more an apartment building. Will it change the character of the neighborhood? Oh, yes, it would because you don't see homes like that in the Cherrywood area that they're proposing, you know? So I think that definitely is going to change the character of the neighborhood. As I listened to all of this tonight, it's sad that we, the people of this city, always have to come to these boards and fight all the time. If it's not the planning boards, the Board of Alderman, if it's not the Board of Alderman, it's the Board of Education to try to preserve our city and our neighborhoods. This is the last frontier, the southwest quadrant. When I was on the Board of Alderman in 2002 to 2005, they talked about what Bernie Street did, that we had 95% build out. I remember when Hannafords had that property and they wanted to put a big store there. And what happened? I was an Alderman at large, so I represented everybody in the city. And I would go to all these meetings and be there standing behind my constituents because that's what you're elected to do, and that's what I did. And now you're seeing people coming out here again and saying, please don't disturb my neighborhood. And when we talk about traffic studies, I was just at the Board of Public Works meeting because of, West Hollis Street is just such a disaster. We have a great school there, the Charter School, but it's a disaster with the traffic and someone's going to get hurt. So you're planning to put something like this up, and we've got the buses, as we talked about, that's going to the new middle school, that's adding more vehicles. Look at that, you know? That's definitely out of the character of the neighborhood. And didn't they promise the neighborhood when they built the middle school that you would never see the school? And look at how high this is, you're going to be able to see this over the trees? So it's definitely out of the character of the neighborhood. And so Conant Road is now going to get filled up even more, Main Dunstable. Has anybody been down to this area? This is your southwest quadrant of the city. West Hollis Street is overflowing, Conant Road is overflowing, and so is Main Dunstable. These roads are only two-lane roads. They were never built for all this traffic. I feel like I'm repeating myself from a meeting today. These roads really haven't been. The studies haven't been there and we keep building more and more and more. They always say, build it and they will come. Okay, great. But where are we putting people? We don't really have a housing shortage. What we have is a shortage of being able for people to come in and get what they want. And this is going to be an eyesore in the city of Nashua in that particular area. So I would say that this should not be approved tonight, that the applicant should not be allowed to build this type of housing in the residential neighborhood, and that this should be held at the planning board. Is he probably going to sue the city again? Probably. But if it was zoned for not elderly, senior housing, then that's what they should go with, with the senior housing. Then you're going to open up probably more homes in the city because seniors like myself who want to downsize an 800 square foot or 1,000 square feet isn't unheard of because if you're in a 1,500 square foot house, you want to drop probably 500 square feet or more because you don't need it. You'd be able to start selling homes and you'll see more homes opening up in Nashua. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Colleen. I live at 10 Margaret Circle. My land is not abut this, but it is in my neighborhood. There's a couple of things that I heard this evening. One of them was anything else ever proposed on this piece of land, I believe you asked. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there was 160-unit apartment building that was proposed there and by the same person, Mr. Parsons, who owns, owns the land. So I believe that was shut down. So obviously, when that took place, he knew what the requirements were for this area, such as the detached units, the 55-plus, which I think is a great idea. In 2030, all the baby boomers will be above 65. And they're going to need some kind of housing for themselves. Townhouses, I don't think anybody that's 65 and moving out of their large home would go into a townhouse with all the stairs. There is over on Houston, right across, they built the 55-plus places, beautiful, beautiful area. South, southwest Nashua is the real, the last real suburb that's in Nashua. And I think one of the great things about living here is that you do have your downtown, you put the art centers, shops and restaurants, and you have that vibrant area. But also having a suburban area, that's a draw for a lot of people where they want a single-family home, they want to be able to raise their kids, have, ride, ride their bikes out on the roads around there. By adding 44 condos which, or townhouses which could potentially add 88 extra cars along with the school that's been built there, I think would actually end up hurting the area because there is going to be so much traffic and, you know, dangerous for kids to be out by themselves. I think that's about all I put down here. And so I thank you. I appreciate this hearing.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Mayeng Patel, 8 Cherrywood Drive, Nashua. So I'm not any technical, I'm not technical that can elaborate more on the topic that we are, everyone mentioned about it, but I want to support whatever my neighbors mention, like specifically Santosh and Leatherman and every other neighbors that we support in. And plus, there are 250-plus people probably watching right now, families that cannot make it today. And, you know, last time also I came to the planning board meeting and I did spoke about this. And again and again, we have to come and express our feelings with, you know, busy schedule with our family and coming here and expressing, I don't know what, we need your help in terms of planning board not to approve this. And this is like, this is no-brainer, you know? Keep coming back and forth, the investor coming and trying to re-project whatever he needs to do. But I think as, as everybody mentioned, we need to stop this. So I hope the planning board can help and support this purpose. Thanks.
My name is Gautam Shah. I've been a Nashua resident since 1993, almost 33, 31 years. I live on 9 Carnation Circle. I'm here for the same reason as most of these folks are here today. What I'd like to ask this team here is that, you know, if I were, and rephrasing what Santosh said, is if I were to build a multi-family or in my single-unit home or my, my one-family, single-family home, would I be allowed, allowed the variance? In my retirement, I'd like this, I'd definitely like that income from the second family. Or I'd like to move into a, you know, senior living community, which it's, which this uses, you know, it is used, it is approved for, right? So I stand with all of these guys. And here, I'd like to request anyone who's opposed to this, please stand up. As you can see, there are many people here who are not agreeing with this variance. So I request this team here to consider that. Thank you.
Is there anyone who has not had an opportunity to speak in opposition that still wishes to speak?
Okay. Mr. Leclaire, would you just ask if anyone on Zoom wishes to speak in opposition?
Yes, thank you. We haven't done Zoom in a while, so I was forgetting about that. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak in opposition or concern to this plan?
I'd like to speak.
Okay, just like the folks here, if you could just first identify, name and address for the record, please?
Yes, and the, just to let you know, the Zoom volume is really, really bad. So I couldn't hear half of what was being said. But anyway, my name is Demi Seoli. I live at 6 Midhurst. And I do have concerns about this property. I do have family in the Cherrywood area. And like, just as everybody else was saying, it does not fit the character of the neighborhood. When I think it was the attorney that was speaking, I'm not sure if that's who was speaking in the beginning or if it was the developer, but senior housing would be a very good, it would be very good for that area, but not the townhouses because, you know, as people age, it's hard for them to do stairs and things. But in that area, they can access a doctor's office, walking trails, the bus line, dining, hairdressing, and a gas station and a convenience store. It would be a very, very convenient place to have some elderly house, well, senior housing. And something like a duplex or something like that, you know, if, if it must be developed. My opinion is the master plan calls out for, you know, conservationally and more open space. And this, there's walking trails that are used by many, many people in that neighborhood. So not only are we going to have, you know, 88 more people, I don't know how many cars that, how many more traffic that has, because I haven't seen a traffic study either, but you have the new development on Buck Meadow, you have the development, I think, on Ridge Road. And now we're going to be talking in a few weeks about a professional disc golf course at Roby Park that's going to bring 2,000 people a month into the area. I just don't know how much more you think the southwest quadrant can take before it becomes a concrete jungle. With this, I missed the first part of the meeting, but I would have serious concerns about the developer talking to and getting approval or favorable recommendation from the Conservation Commission. There are wetlands there, there are monarch butterflies which are endangered in New Hampshire, there's milkweed, which is the only place that they raise their young on is the milkweed. And I would be very concerned about the, the environmental impact this development would have. Even if trees aren't cut, you're still going to have, you know, you're going to have people that are using rock salt, lawn chemicals and things like that. So I would really be, I don't know if the Conservation Commission has weighed in, but I would strongly recommend that this gets, you know, before this gets approved, it does go to the Conservation Commission and they look at things like that, endangered species. I mean, monarch butterflies are endangered. They're not just, oh, we only have, you know, we have a few left, big, big deal. They're endangered. And I saw a lot of milkweed in that area in those wetlands, and I think that we should take that very seriously. I'd like to see it remain open land, personally speaking. Or possibly a small business that is in, you know, in mind with the other businesses that are in the area. There's, you know, like I said, the restaurants, hairdressing, veterinarian. I don't think anybody wants to see it built up to, you know, these, these townhomes that are multi-level. It just, you're asking people to deal with the school and on top of this, you're going to be asking them to deal with these multi-level. And it's, it's not right. It's bringing down the values of them home. I mean, that school looks like a, like a prison. And I would, I personally would like to see this remain undeveloped, but if not, single homes or duplexes that are more like the ranch style and to keep it with the age restriction that was already decided upon. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Okay, so I would like to open it up to others on Zoom who may wish to speak. I would just note that we've got about five minutes left in the original 45 minutes. So if we could just get maybe, if folks on Zoom could raise their hands if they're interested in speaking, just so we have a sense of how many people are remaining to speak that haven't had the opportunity.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could you just start by identifying yourself, name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Janusz Pankowski. I live on 11 Daily Lee Drive. And I've learned about this project about two hours ago. I live here about 10 years, and I'm totally surprised that such a project is being proposed without broad consultation. I would like to thank the lady who asked to show the buildings because those buildings are definitely out of character for this area. This is not we, what we wanted to see when we bought the house. I frequently run in the trail in the forest, and there is a number of people who walk there. And I'll be afraid that there'll be a lot of bikers suddenly with additional traffic there, and I'll be able to run just the way I do every day without being impacted by a bicycle. So thank you. I oppose, I oppose this, this variance as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing any other hands? No. Okay, well, not seeing any others on Zoom who've expressed an interest in speaking. I would open it up, just in case there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak affirmatively in favor of the plan.
I would like to add, I am Pushpawali Gopalakrishna. Was someone talking?
Yes, so hold on just a minute. So I had asked for a show of hands, are you wishing, wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm speaking in opposition.
Okay.
And I'm Pushpawali Gopalakrishna, calling, speaking from 3 Holly Hawk Avenue. I live right behind the area they are planning to construct. I just wanted to express my disappointment with the city, even though there are multiple family members here and lot of houses, the, the community is representing for the past two years, saying what are the pain points for them and their emotions and their sensitivity that's going to happen because of this area being built. And continuously, this proposal is coming back to the board, and we are having a hearing again and again, and people expressing their hardships here, that is not being considered. That's something that I wanted to express. I'm pretty disappointed with how city is not taking our grievances and our thoughts. So this means like we as the taxpayers, we feel that we have been very disappointed and we have not been encouraged to show our emotions or feelings of preserving our land. So that's what I wanted to, wanted to bring it here. I know everybody is considering about traffic, which is horrible, because I go for walking, and we couldn't even stop the cars on the unstable road. We have to literally stop the kids while the cars do not stop, even though people are walking there. So there's so many hardships for the people who are living here, and we try to express this every time. And this, this problem and this proposal is coming over and over again, and without even considering the people's hardships here, who are living here and who are paying taxes and who are more than the builder. Like builders representing only one person. Here, two hundred people are representing for each family, but I don't think the city is considering that more. So I just wanted to say that, that we as a community, we are very disappointed with that, and I, and I oppose this one.
Thank you. So I see, please, before you speak, just let me, I see two hands raised on Zoom. Sam, can you just confirm?
Yes.
Do we have any other hands that are raised?
I see two.
Yes, so I see two hands raised. I'm going to presume for the moment that those are folks wishing to speak in opposition. So I'm going to take those two folks who currently have their hand raised, and then going to close the testimony as to those speaking in opposition, and allow the folks who just stood up here in the room who wish to speak in favor to speak after that. So either one, I can't, it's too far.
Okay, yeah, can I go first? My name is Srinivas Rangarajan. I live in four Cherrywood Drive. I'm one of the arbiters of the property. I would like to bring the attention, I'm speaking in opposition of this project. I would like to draw attention to the hardship clause particularly laid out in the code verdict, as well as in the need for justifying it in the two variances. It is absolutely, there's absolutely no mention of any type of hardship that the builder has mentioned that would come in the way of, you know, having something constructed that, that falls in line with the zoning requirements. There is absolutely nothing in the application that, that says that there is something about the builder or the property that is in any way causing hardship. So I'd like to bring that to the focus with the planning board when you consider this proposal. And I'm, once again, speaking in opposition of the project. Thank you.
Hi, this is Imanchi from eight Cherrywood Drive. And I just, I want to say that I do oppose this project. We are right behind this project, and I agree with everyone who has all the reasons that they have provided. They're right on, right spot on. We do not want to see Southwest Nashua turning into a concrete journal, I mean, concrete jungle. And all the concerns that I mentioned, I'm right on with it, and I do oppose this project.
Thank you. So I'm now going to come back to the, the hearing room here, and I believe we have a, a few folks who have indicated interest in speaking in favor. So same as the other folks, if you could just come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and then provide your testimony.
Hi, my name is Rogério Palas. I bought the house at six Cherrywood. It's my English not very good, but my son, he's going to translate for me.
And so today, he, he just found out today that there was going to be this meeting here? And he said that he likes the idea about having the townhouses there, and? And that he also thinks that he'd rather have townhouses there instead of having like commercial places there, like Walgreens or any other, like retailer, like commercial buildings there? And he also thinks that with the townhouses, his new property that he just got, he thinks that the, um, its value won't really change or like decrease. And so that's why he also thinks that it wouldn't be a bad decision to have the townhouses there. And he also is saying that he got the house for him to have like, um, people around him and not like, like I said, like retailer, like retail buildings around, commercial buildings around. And he, he just wants like, like neighbors and, and things like that. And so he would, he'd really like the townhouses, he would really like the townhouses to be approved, so no other, um, commercial buildings, like I said again, commercial buildings or retailers could have a place there. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Good evening, everybody. My name is Charlie Papa Giorgio. Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I'm one of the members of the Maplewood condo association, a commerce center. I represent nine Merritt Parkway, Family Pizza and Roast Beef. My family and I are owners. And I'd just like to quickly give our thoughts in support of this proposed addition to the neighborhood. So firstly, I've been told that there has been mixed reception about this project, and I do want to mention that as members of the community, my family and I, of course, had our initial speculation. But after viewing these plans and meeting with the developers, who are extremely forthright with everyone in the association, explaining this project in great detail, I don't understand how or why this would be turned out. I cannot myself identify any negative factors or impact to the association or the community. This is a well-thought-out project in appearance and functionality, and will only add to the comfort of this neighborhood. I believe it would be a welcome addition, especially after seeing the developers' previous works and current works being key parts of the Nashua community. Also, please do not deny the opportunity it will create for forty-four new families to call this beautiful area home and allow them to be part of this growing community. We are embracing it thoughtfully and anticipate this project to be a positive move for the community and make a positive impact on all of the surrounding businesses and neighbors in general. My family and I have full faith in the developers and their plans, and I hope you all share that sentiment. And let me just touch on really quick. I do hear most of the opposition seemingly to me being a little bit discriminatory in the age-restricted, you know, talks. Personally, I think that should just be taken under consideration. Again, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience or on Zoom who's, wishes to speak in favor of the plan?
I think those are just remaining hands up from opposition.
Yeah, the, the one gentleman, I think, already had his hand up and spoke. So I, I'm not sure about the other one.
Yeah, I think they're the same ones.
Same ones. Just have their hands up. Okay. With that, I will then give the applicant the opportunity to speak in rebuttal to the testimony that they've heard.
Adam, do you want to close the public?
Yeah, you have to close.
Public comment, just formally?
I don't think we need to close the public. I mean, we'll close the hearing.
Yeah, we just end the comment part.
Okay, so a couple of things to touch on briefly. You know, there was obviously some concern heard there about traffic, right? So along with every site and application that we've prepared within the city of Nashua, we have to file what's called the Traffic Impact Report, the TIR worksheet. There are certain specific thresholds that, if you have a use that generates a certain number of traffic in a couple of different conditions, you're actually required to produce a full-on traffic study, traffic counts, all of that stuff. Just as a reminder to the board, we did submit a TIR worksheet that was reviewed by Wayne Husband in the group at DPW. That was about a third of what that threshold is. We really don't believe traffic is a concern there for that reason. Certainly, by no means do we mean any disrespect or anything like that, throwing out the term elderly. That is specifically how it is written in the ordinance. It is elderly housing units verbatim. That's just why we've been saying it that way. As I mentioned, no disrespect mean there. In terms of, you know, there's a little bit of respect paid to, you know, potentially older persons moving into one of these townhomes. There's actually a spot, if you look on the architectural floor plans, for an elevator if someone, buyer, so desires to add one. There's actually a place, and you can see it probably best on the garage level plan there, but it's really kind of the, looking at the unit all the way to the right, the top right corner there by the stairs. There's actually the potential, like I said, for someone buying one of these to have that installed. So certainly, it could be used by someone who has the need for that sort of thing in their house. You know, in closing, I would just say, I think the one thing that we can all agree on in this room is that if this were a popularity contest, this wouldn't be winning any awards, right? But that's not the basis that you have to make decisions on. We believe that the merits of this project stand by themselves. Certainly, you've heard about from twenty-five, thirty people here in the room out of the ninety-one thousand residents that live in Nashua, you know. So just want to put that in perspective. With that being said, I don't know if you have any final questions for us or anything you'd want additional clarification on, but myself and the applicants are here to discuss it. I, I have a question, and then I suspect other board members may have some questions. You know, one thing that I saw in many of the written comments, and we heard several times, you know, during the public testimony, is that, you know, the concept of hardship as it relates to, you know, an individual or, you know, taking property with knowledge of, you know, sort of the existing zoning and conditions. And so I wonder if you can just, from the applicant's perspective, and I don't know if this is you or council or the applicant, but speak to the, the relationship between those two and, and your response to, to that particular comment? Sure, yeah, happy to do that. Yeah, basically, obviously, the, the applicant did purchase the property, I think it was in 2022. You know, again, obviously, he knew the zoning at the time. We were going through the process at the time. I think the first time we came before this board was 2021, maybe the fall of that year for conceptual hearing, you might remember, for that hundred-and-sixty unit building itself. We obviously heard all the feedback, took all that in consideration, and modified the plan at the time. Yeah, you know, effectively, there's, when you really look at it, there's really not much you can do here that, you know, could be done within the code without having a hardship. And the reason why I say that is, you know, you look at the commercial uses that are allowed in the Flex Use District. There's a short list of them. There's not a lot there. A lot of those uses are already in place. You've got the gas station, you've got the medical offices, you have the veterinarian, you have the daycare. You have all of that stuff. You have it on the periphery of the parcel, right? You have those in more desirable locations, okay? So if you were to build more of the same of what's allowed there, you'd just be cannibalizing the commercial uses that exist there, right? So that kind of takes a lot of that off the table. The other part of that is, you know, this is the biggest piece of property within there. It obviously costs the most to purchase just from a land value perspective. There's not like, you can put one of the uses is, for example, a farm stand. That's not going to have any kind of, you know, positive return whatsoever if you just purchase that size commercial property and put a farm stand, right? So from that perspective, there's, there's very limited commercial things that you can actually do that aren't allowed in, on the property. From, again, the residential standpoint of things, I think we were, you know, pretty well stated in, in, in that. But just to kind of reiterate, like, because of the way that this has all developed, you know, single-family, just, we don't feel it will be a successful project. You just don't see this type of situation where, again, the access is through commercial properties. Yes, all these folks that have homes in the FUOD, they drive by and around this. They don't have to go literally through these parking lots to access their properties, right? So when you really boil it down, there's not much there that actually makes sense. That was going to be with the land, no matter when the applicant purchased the property. So those two things aren't mutually exclusive.
I just want to want to add one supplement on the Hill case about knowledge at the time that you buy it. That's just one factor to consider. It's not dispositive. And the Hill case talked about corrective action. In Hill, it was a family that owned a very large piece of property, and they subdivided it off to create a house lot for a family member. But they didn't create a lot with enough frontage. So when the court looked at that, and when the zoning board looked at it, they said, look, you made a mistake. You get a big piece of land, you cut it too small. You can go back and re-subdivide it and get a fully conforming lot. Very different situation than we have here. I just wanted to make sure when you talk about knowledge, it's something to think about, but it's certainly not dispositive or something that should weigh heavily in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I just had a question about traffic, and maybe you can give me your experience. So, you know, we've talked about commercial uses on the site. But, you know, in terms of reference, like a twenty thousand square foot grocery store, the peak traffic of that versus forty-four units, do you have a feel for that?
Yeah, in fact, we actually did a study using GPI back in 2020 or 2021. It was actually comparing the hundred-and-sixty units to those commercial things. I don't think we've necessarily got it as part of this record, because it's not really, it was never really updated to match forty-four units. It kind of proved the point at a hundred-and-sixty. But, yeah, basically, commercial is going to be a higher producer, generally speaking. There's certain uses, obviously, in commercial, in the commercial world that may not necessarily generate the kind of traffic that residential development will. But on the, on the whole, on the large residential, especially on the scale of forty-four units compared to like a twenty thousand square foot, you know, commercial site, the commercial is going to have more traffic as a generator. It'll also be a little bit different in terms of the hours, too.
How about like a Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I don't have the numbers, like, I, I don't really want to just rattle off numbers offhand. I don't want to, you know, give you the wrong impression on anything. But, yeah, I mean, again, just having done this work for, you know, fifteen, sixteen years now, and having to reference the Traffic Engineers Manual, the IT, with all the data that they have, it's just, you know, you just don't, it doesn't compare, quite frankly. Oliver, please?
Thank you. It, it's actually just a quick question. It's to my colleague's quest, question that he asked, and you probably can't answer it offhand. When you did the study, you did it of a hundred-and-sixty, and you said you did 2020 and 2021. And I'm not sure how much of an impact it would have had. But did you do it also with the knowledge of, kind of, the impact that the, the school would have had at, at that time? Because obviously, school was only being built at the time. Now the school is built. And I know we're, we're talking basically a quarter of the size of, of what you, what you have, comparatively speaking. And the school is going to have traffic peak times, you know? But that school is large, and that school is going to have a lot of activities, of sports and so on. And I know many years ago, I actually had an accident of somebody pulling out of Buck Meadow, nailed our truck, turned us around every which direction. So I know that there is a lot of traffic there. So did you take any of that into consideration during your study?
Yeah, again, so what we looked at was trip generation of the development. We didn't do a full-on traffic analysis, because we didn't meet any of those thresholds that required us to do so. So there's very specific standards that kick you into that. Like I said, the current development's about a third of what that threshold is.
I, I don't know if my, my comment here is, is appropriate to, to this time. And Mr. Chairman, or Vice Chairman, please correct me if I'm, if I'm out of line at this point. I understand what you're saying, but for these people that are here, your impact is collective to what they're now experiencing with the school and what they will be experiencing as the years go on because of that. So you can understand their anxiety, and you can understand this piling on. Now, when they were buying this home, the city had always, when that was being built, the city had always intended on putting the school there, whether they realized it or not when they were purchasing their homes, and when their homes were doing that. Long before I became an alderman and so on, this was an intent of the, of the city was. before I became an alderman and so on, this was an intent of the, of the city was to build that. So just saying that, that this has always been and always will be, but it is something that it's kind of piling on them, so you can understand the anxiety. And I don't mean you, and I don't mean the lawyer that's here and so on, but it's...
I completely understand what you're saying. And I also understand your point of, you know, the school was always thought of. I believe it was actually referenced on that 1997 concept.
Yes.
So were the 60 elderly units, so were, I think it was 80,000 square feet of commercial development.
Right.
By allowing this, there's not really the room to have that 80,000 square feet of commercial. You're actually going to be less than that top threshold. So I think at the end of the day, collectively, when you look at this mixed-use village, you know, overall, on the whole, it's going to be a little bit less as a result of basically allowing this versus some other things collectively. So very sympathetic to that, but, you know, again, I think all of that was thought out during the initial setup of the FUOD.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
If you have reasons, let them know they can't talk.
Anything else that the applicant wants to add?
No, I think we're okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, we completed the public testimony portion, and so, subject to the board members having any additional questions, the next step would be to close the public hearing and for the board to move into our deliberations on the application. So before we move to close the public hearing, do any board members have any questions during the public hearing portion? Mr. Clark?
I wonder if just, and maybe Sam, you can do this, can you very briefly summarize the role of the board in a flexible use overlay district? And why this is different than a typical overlay? And maybe even how many of these are there in the city?
Certainly. So this is the only one. And this district, and Attorney Cronin did a good job of kind of covering the basis for the board's unique authority in terms of its ability to vary permitted uses. And that's essentially why the request is for a waiver, but the standards are the variance standards. So in any other case, it would be the zoning board who would have the authority to modify uses. What's also unique about this overlay district is that it employs some of the dimensional modification criteria and procedures that are found in the mixed-use overlay districts as well as the downtown zones. So that's where you see these requests for the number of stories, that relief, as well as the density relief. So it's really employing all of the innovative land use controls that the city bakes into its overlay districts, conditional use permits aside, into this one area. So it really is an incredibly unique property from a zoning perspective and the powers that the planning board has here. I hope that was sufficient, but happy to clarify.
Yeah, yeah. So just to summarize, there is no zoning board for this area. This board is the...
Well, yes and no. The applicant still has the ability to seek variances in the traditional sense from the zoning board if they so wish. I don't think that we actually have the authority from the state to prohibit that, but we provide another option in terms of seeking relief through the planning board. So the ZBA is not off the table. It's still certainly a presence and an option.
Good. Oliver, please.
Thank you. And that actually kind of leads to my question. We did get a letter from an alderman who cited some of our ordinances and so on, and stated that we should, that it should not be here, that it should be in zoning. And you're saying because this is the FUOD, this makes it different and therefore can be and has the option to be here versus in zoning, and that is the answer to his comments and so on?
I would say that's a fair summary. It is such a unique district, and it's such a unique set of powers that the planning board has, that on its face, it seems totally alien and unusual, and in a way, it is, but totally legal under state statute as an innovative land use control.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we close up here?
Yeah, I have another question for staff.
Sure.
Are there other areas in the city that come to mind that have a similar multifamily use adjacent to single-family homes? I was trying to think of recent cases, maybe down off of Burke Street area. Is this an unusual situation in the city to have a situation like this?
I would say no, particularly in some of the older parts of the city. Obviously, it's difficult to find an exact replica where, and Mr. Chisholm did a good job of identifying the unique situation where this is in R30 zone. However, a lot of the lots are really representative of R9 characteristics. So in the more dense RC, RB districts, you do have multifamily right next to single-family. It's all mixed together, and that's really throughout the downtown and beyond. But for a more stark example, the Burke Street plan that was just recently approved is a very good example, where you do have single-family across from what has now been approved, a 200-plus multifamily development. And, you know, in the scale of forms of residential housing, you know, going from single-family to duplex to triplex and then to a four-unit townhome, that is a relatively small jump as opposed to the Burke Street example.
And just, Sam, if you could remind us that when it becomes, the threshold for becoming multifamily housing, is it triplex or is it four?
That's...
Or it's duplex?
That's a great question. There's, I believe, actually some conflicting language in the code, but we are in agreement, obviously, the court as well, is that, you know, at four units, it falls under a multifamily. So I believe it's either written like at four units or over three. So I think the way that you deduce it is it's four units or more is, throws you into multifamily.
But, you know, certainly then, a duplex would not be considered multifamily housing.
Correct.
And three units, it sounds like would not be considered.
Sounds like it would not, no.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Other questions? And I would just note that, I mean, we do have the opportunity to ask staff additional questions during deliberations if we so need to. Okay. In that case, sorry, I am now going to close the public hearing, and the board will move into its deliberations. So again, we have this site plan application before us. It is, as you heard from the applicant, the same application, subject to, you know, minor plan edits that are consistently required by engineering or otherwise in the context of the application. But otherwise, the same application we had before us back in 2022. And I think of principal relevance, you know, for our discussion is we have two of those unique sort of waiver variance requests that are associated with this being in the FUOD overlay district. So we have a specific variance, or I'm sorry, waiver request with respect to multifamily housing, to permit multifamily housing where it would not be permitted by right, and similarly to permit non-age-restricted housing where it would not otherwise be permitted by right here. And again, I do just want to confirm that the nature of the decision of the Superior Court indicated that the error, as the court saw it there, was specific to the failure of the applicant to request and the board to consider a waiver for multifamily housing. And specifically, I'll just quote directly from the decision here. The court says, quote, "The LUC requires that any waiver of the terms, uses and dimensional requirements of the FUOD shall be submitted to the planning board. The applicant did not submit a waiver or for multifamily use on the property. The applicant only submitted variance requests from age restriction and building height limit. Accordingly, the board committed an error of law when it determined it could obtain jurisdiction over the proposed site plan despite the applicant not obtaining all of the necessary variances. In light of this finding, the court concludes that the board's approval of the site plan application was improper," end quote. So again, just to confirm for the record, what the court said was, "The error of law was the failure to effectively require that the applicant seek that additional waiver request with respect to multifamily housing." But it did not say that the board was obviously prohibited from considering such a waiver. I would also just note that the court decision, although it speaks to some of the issues raised around, you know, hardship in the context of the age-limited housing waiver request, the court does also affirmatively state that because of their decision with respect to the multifamily variance, lack of request was sufficient error, that the court did not affirmatively address the age restriction variance waiver request. So again, just to sort of, you know, outline what I think is the, you know, I think are the two, you know, principal issues before us. So with that said, I will open it up to other board members first. Would certainly like to hear from folks in terms of your perspective based on the applicant's updated presentation regarding the waiver requests, obviously, that the public testimony that we heard and received in writing, and so would open up to board members your comment, feedback.
Just one procedural thing here, too, maybe this is for staff. The two waivers that are essentially for the variances, they're essentially a linchpin of the whole application, right?
Yes.
So we should be taking those up first prior to any of the site plan suitability-type waivers and any of the plan on the merits type motions. So do you think it's appropriate to start with those two items?
I think that would be...
Because it seems to me if the board doesn't make it through those two items, let's just be hypothetical here, it's really kind of dumb at that point.
Fair point. But I would also say if the board doesn't make it through the dimensional modifications...
Okay.
That's also a... All of the waivers requested are required for this plan to be approved as proposed. But I think it's fine to take those. Those, I think, arguably have the most gravity in terms of allowing the plan as proposed, so I think they'd be fine to take them first.
Just, I guess, to follow up on that point, though, in terms of, you know, how any board member would construct a motion ultimately, and I may have misunderstood sort of the nature of this, but I did not understand that the waiver requests are effectively separate applications. They are part of the site plan application.
Correct, they are part of the site plan application.
So I think, Scott, to your point, it seems to me just practically it makes sense to have the discussion around those two items first to sort of get a read from the board on where we're at. But I don't think, if I understand correctly, that we would, you know, take independent votes on those waiver requests as opposed to the site plan as a whole, including the waiver requests?
No, I would say you should be taking individual votes on all of the waivers, the ones that are using the variance criteria. Each of those, those two, should be two separate votes because you would be making findings for each of those, and those are, they're two different requests, they have two different characteristics. The findings should be unique for those, and those would be separate votes.
Okay. So even though they are mutually dependent in terms of all of the waivers being part of a single-site plan application, you would still ask the board to make, to take separate decisional votes on those items? Okay, so...
Yeah, so with that being, yeah, so with that being said, I think you could, we could approach it two ways. We could do all of the, you know, go through the waivers that are not related to the variances, check on those first, and then get into the variances, or we can do the opposite.
Should we just have a discussion first?
Yeah, I just, as we're putting together motions, I kind of want to just understand how we go about it, that's all.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I'm up for, let's jump into the, just the discussion.
Okay. Anybody have a preference in terms of leading us off? Ultimately, I see you getting ready.
You see my little wheels?
Yeah.
The little mouse going in my head, yeah. Okay, I'll get it started, because, good or bad, I will start with the age-restricted elderly, politically correct however you want to do. First off, as an alderman here in the city, I will let everybody know age-restricted housing is a negative for a city. And the reason why it is a negative for the city is because once a deed is created for age-restricted, it is impossible to become undone. And if we want to build a vibrant city, meaning we want to get young people into the city, and we want to build a city that is ever-growing, building good schools, building new people to come in and so on, and I'm speaking as a person who is into her 60s, so I am not some young person that is of childbearing age. I am of a person who will be moving into these types of homes. It is difficult. They refer to us as being a silver tsunami here in New England, and this is why. So once a deed happens, it's undoable. So it's a community that you build, and unless everybody votes to undo it, it doesn't get undone. So we are building all these communities of these silver communities, so to speak, and it's hard to undo them. So to have them, you want to have, I love the idea of building communities without staircases. I live in a raised ranch, and I look at that staircase every time my achy bones have to go up and down them and say, "Why did I buy a house like this? I need a ranch." So I understand what we're talking about. Yeah, I'd like to live in an age-restricted community, but it's not good for the city. It really isn't. Having said that, I understand what you're saying, that you would rather have that there. I also say you really don't want to have commercial property, you don't want a butt commercial property. There's a lot of other things that go next to commercial property. I also wouldn't want to have to look at these tall buildings. So having said that, what do you do? Do you leave this land kind of blank? Because I agree, but this is private property. They have the right to build whatever they want. How would you feel if it was your, you have the right, how would you feel this if this were your property and so on? So I'm going to, I'm going to say this to you. How would you feel if this were your property and someone says to you, "You can't do whatever you want for the money that you build on it"? Now, someone said to me, excuse me, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to talk here, okay?
I know she's talking to you in the audience, but we don't need to dialogue.
But I don't mean to, I don't mean to talk to you in that respect. So someone said, someone came out and said, "Well, I want to build a property here and I want to rent it." Well, guess what? You kind of can. It's called an ADU. It's called an accessory dwelling unit, and you can kind of do that. You can kind of build an apartment within your home, and you have the legal right to do it. You have to kind of jump through a few hoops, but you can kind of do it, and if the state gets their way, you'll be able to build a few of them, meeting certain kind of restrictions. I will fight you on it, but you will have the right to do that. I don't know how I'm going to, I don't know how I'm going to vote right now. I'm still sitting on the fence, because I do understand what you're going through. But it is a kind of, it's kind of a situation. There are a lot of walking trails. I know there are walking trails across the street from Buck Meadow. I also know what Maine Dunstable is like. I, long before that school was built, I was going to the dog park there, and someone came flying out from where that gas station is through Buck Meadow, hit my truck, spun us around, and we went onto the other side of the road. So I know how scary that is. I was with my husband and my greyhound, and I have not been that scared in a very long time, and that was probably about 10 years ago. So, yeah, it's a rough place to be in. I, you know, I can understand, I can feel, but as far as needing housing, we do. And someone made a very good point, that's 44 homes, 44 families, 44 people that will be, should be welcome to... That's 44 homes, 44 families, 44 people that will be—should be welcome into your community. So, we have to think about all of those kind of things. It's a hard decision, but it meets all the criteria, so—I'll leave it here. Thank you.
Mr. Clair, you men?
Yeah, I'll talk about a few things. You know, obviously, I've been around this board a long time, and, you know, whenever multifamily comes up next to individual homes, there's always—there's always folks that don't want that, and I'll be straight up, I live right in this neighborhood, so I know exactly what you folks are talking about. I'm a neighbor, just like any one of you. You know, but I've also been very involved with the city master plan. I've been very involved with the housing issues of the city and a lot of things, and, you know, the southwest end gets a bad rap from the rest of the city for all the things that we push away. Every other part of the city has this kind of housing, and a lot of it, every other part of the city has a lot of it, you know, with the exception of southwest quadrant. And so, you know, I'm sort of torn a little bit as someone who cares about the whole city in trying to, you know, versus my own neighborhood. So, the sort of "not in my backyard" thing kind of hits home to me, because it is my backyard, so I feel like I can say my own opinion, it is my backyard, you know, and I think that, you know, this is a good transition kind of setup, and the master plan contemplates more of this type of housing, you know, and we don't have a lot of townhome-style houses in the city, and, you know, I think about the younger folks that are trying to buy first homes, as well as the older folks who are trying to downsize, and what are your options? We are building in the southwest quadrant. We've already built several age-restricted developments. There's one at Groton Road, there's one at Conant Road, you know, there's several other—I think there's one now on 111. So, we've got three or so that have been built since I've been on the board in this area. So, I'm kind of of the opinion, we don't need more age-restricted housing in the southwest quadrant. We have our share of that. I'm not sure we have our share of multifamily in the southwest quadrant. So, just my opinion of it. I mean, this, to me, looks a lot like what is adjacent to the houses along Ridge Road. There's a couple developments on Ridge Road, you know, in between Cyril's and Buck Meadow that look just like this to me, and, you know, nobody from Maplewood complained about those. It's just because it's on this side of it, you know, so I don't know. That's just my—that's my opinion of that, so that's where I'm at at the moment.
Mr. Green, Mr. Hirsch? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah. No, I think—I think it's a good project overall. I think the impact is going to be far less than if we're a commercial project there in terms of traffic, aesthetics, and everything else. We do have a tremendous need for housing. I live also in the southwest quadrant, and I sort of—I agree that it is—I think this is as good a proposal as we're going to see. It's scaled down considerably from the 60 units we saw a few years ago. So, that's where I stand on it, ultimately.
Mr. Hudson?
I'm glad that Scott asked a clarifying question about traffic, because that's also how I view it in terms of the alternative uses that could be in this site, allowable uses as it stands now with no variances, generate significantly more traffic. So, the proposed use from a traffic standpoint, I don't think traffic is the basis for denial of this. There was submitted expert testimony relative to house values. There was not, to my knowledge, submitted alternate testimony, professional testimony against. I know a lot of people intuitively thought that maybe it would devalue house—they're value of the houses, but I don't believe there's expert testimony to that effect. For me, it's the hardship question, and this is a very unique property, and FUOD, whatever, is very unique as well, and so that's the challenging part. I recall when this came up last time, there was a lot of discussion about that. I think I've asked, "Why, again, don't you think you need a variance?", and the applicant and their attorneys didn't think they did, and so we are where we are today. Now, we're re-eligating something that we did before, and nothing substantially changed other than the fact that now they're seeking that variance, which at the time, they were questioning whether we needed it or not, and we're seeking legal—you know, their legal opinion on that, and unfortunately, they didn't, so. To the public, I—you know, there's a lot of comments, effective, "I can't believe, you know, plenty of us are considering this. I can't believe you're doing this to us." That's not our decision. Cases come before us, and we need to consider them. We don't get to say, "Don't bring that"—you know, "You can't bring that thing to us just because we don't like it and that sort of thing." That's not how it works. Property owners have rights, they can seek to exercise those rights, and we need to consider these cases on an individual basis. We didn't ask for this to came back—the court sent it back to us, and so be it, you know, if we erred and not requesting all the information that was required and that sort of thing, then appropriate to come back, but it's not—it's not the plan that we're seeking to do that. And I take Scott's point, I mean, we do have the burden of trying to consider the whole community's needs, not just an individual neighborhood's needs, and there is a large need for housing as well, well documented in our various city plans and whatnot, so I think that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Yeah, and, Mr. Hudson, I appreciate you reiterating the point about, you know, why it is that we're hearing this case, to your point. This is—it's not as if we have discretion as to whether we're going to be here tonight and considering this case. You know, moreover, I think there is—you know, I think the applicant put it best that there's—you know, if this were a popularity contest, they wouldn't be winning any awards, but it was well stated that that is not the function of the planning board. You know, our function is to consider the case under the criteria we're given in the ordinances, and sometimes that may result in decisions that are not popular, but that's—this is not a political board, it's not our job to be—you know, to hear from constituents and say, "Well, if people don't like this, we're not going to do that." That's not the function of this board, and if it were, there's an awful lot of things that would never be developed, because, you know, people would express objection and, you know, there would be a political response to that, but that's not how this board functions. I am not quite in the neighborhood, but I am right down the street from the neighborhood too, so I'm also a resident of the southwest quadrant. I'm, you know, under a mile from where this site is proposed, so, again, I speak as someone who is relatively speaking, you know, a neighbor to this property, and like Mr. Leclair, I've been on this board for a long time as well, was also involved pretty extensively in the most recent master plan. In addition, because of, you know, my experience serving on this board and being involved in the master plan, I've read a fair bit about, you know, what policymakers are suggesting in terms of how to address what I think everybody agrees is a pretty acute housing need in this city, but throughout the country, and one of the things that comes up over and over and over again is more density. And, Mr. Leclair, to your point, there's—we do have plenty of examples of that other places than the city, and I don't see—so, kind of turning then into the specific criteria for each of the two waivers, I don't see a public interest or the ordinance substantial justice argument for saying multifamily housing should not be allowed in relation to the, you know, the other housing that exists, you know, abutting this property. And, you know, I agree, I was looking at the map as we were speaking, and, you know, some of those neighborhoods, as you mentioned, off of, you know, Spickbrook Road, there's one on, you know, Barrington Ave, for example, doesn't technically qualify as multifamily housing because it's, you know, duplex condos, but I would argue that it's a pretty similar style to what's, you know, being proposed here, and that is actually—you know, I don't know how accurate the Google Maps distance measurements are, but it's about 650 to 700 feet from the closest point in the Cherrywood neighborhood. So, you know, that's pretty close by. It doesn't suggest to me that, you know, what is being proposed here would be out of character with, you know, the other types of developments that exist in this area, even if they are not immediately adjacent to, you know, that particular area of this You know, to me, and I agree in terms of the property values, as Mr. Hudson said, we do have affirmative, you know, testimony from an expert in favor or suggesting that there would not be a negative increase—or negative impact on property values, and I did not hear any sort of countervailing testimony as to a decrease in value. You know, to me, this comes back to unnecessary hardship. That, to me, was the—was the closest question the first time around when we were considering just the age-restricted housing. It's, to me, the closest question. This time around, when we're considering the two different waiver requests, you know, in that regard, I do think that, you know, one of the things, even though obviously we ended up, you know, voting for approval the last time, I did think that the first time around, the applicant could have done a better job of, you know, detailing a bit further how they viewed the project as meeting that criteria, and I do think they've done a much better job of that on this occasion, and, you know, I would just note further that the test under the statute and case law is by no means black and white. It is necessarily inclusive of, you know, subjective elements, and I think, you know, the applicant noted, there's—you know, there's multiple factors, you know, within that analysis that can be considered, and, you know, I think it's—it's not enough to say the developer bought this property knowing that there were these zoning standards in place and these elements, because if simply buying the property subject to, you know, existing zoning standards or existing conditions were enough to disqualify folks from variance relief, then no one would ever get variance, because once you bought the property, you would be charged with knowledge, and you would—you would not qualify for variance. So, I think it has to be clearly something more than that. I think the—you know, as I view it, the sort of intent behind that, you know, criteria is to, you know, prohibit folks from buying properties, you know, with, you know, zoning requirements that apply equally to all of the surrounding properties with no differences in their properties compared to others, and then saying, "Well, gee, now this is a hardship." I do think the applicant has outlined some much more specific reasons why this property is different than the other surrounding properties, and why, you know, the zoning restrictions that we're talking about don't apply to this property in an even and equal way as compared to, you know, the other surrounding uses. So, I think, you know, I could—I've identified in the testimony they've provided, you know, from my perspective, sufficient basis to say, yes, they've met the threshold for hardship. You know, is it—did they go way over it? Maybe not, but I don't think that's—you know, I don't think that's what the standard is, is as long as they can demonstrate hardship, that's sufficient. So, I guess I come back to considering everything we've been through with the prior hearings, you know, with all the factors we've considered, with the provisions that the—with the guidance that the Superior Court has sent back to us. I continue to believe that there's a basis for justifying the waiver request and now the two waiver requests, the multifamily that's properly before us and the age-restricted housing. So, that's sort of where—I would, I think, ultimately come down on this.
Yeah, it's not quite related to the age restriction or something, but I just want to kind of make a comment, something—I made a comment when it came to the mained homes, and this is to the developers and developers that are out there in general. One of the things that we kind of see, and you made a comment to it about that you saw something similar being built, the one thing I'm seeing in this city, and it's really starting to bother me, is we're seeing the same design being built and popping up throughout the city, and that's bothering me. I want to see something a little bit more unique, you know, change it up, folks. We don't need to see the same thing coming up everywhere through the city. Be a little bit more creative, that's all. Thanks.
Do we have further discussion, comment?
I mean, I think we've run this thing around. We should probably put motions out there and—
Yeah.
—see what the board feels, because we could talk about it all night, frankly, so.
So, Mr. Leclair, to your point, you know, we've got the two waiver requests that are sort of, again, unique within the FUOD that, you know, apply the variance criteria, whereas, you know, Mr. Durfee indicated, we'll need to have sort of findings as to each of the, you know, five criteria for meeting the variance, so I would tend to agree with you that it probably makes sense to consider those in turn, because, again, if we were to not find favorably as to either of those, I think it effectively makes the rest of—you know, I think we would still have to ultimately consider the application, but I think it effectively makes it impossible to approve the application, you know, as presented. So, I do think it makes sense to take those, you know, in order. And then, just one additional follow-up question from Mr. Durfee. So, we've got those two waiver requests that are effectively operate-like zoning variance requests, and then there are, as you noted, other waiver requests that are sort of—if I may describe it as more traditional within the planning context. You know, ordinarily, we would not take those types of waivers sort of separately from the site plan as a whole in terms of the vote. So, for purposes of the record, is it sufficient to vote separately on each of the two variance-type waivers and then consider the other waivers as part of the site plan application as a whole, from your perspective?
No, I think these should all be separate votes. The reason being is that you have two variance-esque waiver requests, which are under their own standards, then you have two dimensional modification requests, which are completely different standards. Those are under 19023F, that's the whole site suitability report. So, you're looking at really three, and then you have another waiver that's more of the traditional site plan sort of waiver. So, you have five requests utilizing three different criteria, and then the site plan, if you were to grant site plan approval, that also has to contemplate the architectural design standards, because this whole district is subject to what's known as the Hall's Corner architectural design guidelines. So, that would also need to be a finding that the architecture is in keeping with those guidelines. So, it's a lot of motions, but that's kind of the nature of the flexible use overlay district, where you can do all these modifications, but you have to be justified in your reasoning for doing so, and given, you know, we have—we have a court order, this has gone through the process, you know, this has been a— you know, this has been a, this project's been under our microscope. So any decision that the board makes, whether affirmatively or, or a denial, would need to be very well articulated in terms of the justification for that vote.
And, but just to clarify, the, so looking at the staff report, we've got the, the two zoning-like variance requests, let's call them, in 4.2. And then we've got in 4.1, a waiver request with respect to existing conditions, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that is under the, the standard.
Yes.
Planning ordinances, it's not specific to the FUOD in, in this case. And then we have 4.3 and 4.4, which I believe are both FUOD-related or...
They are, but those are the more mixed-use overlay.
Right. But, but I guess my question was going to be, I, I don't, unlike the, the two zoning-like variance requests in 4.2, I don't think that the, that the 4.3 and 4.4 waiver request incorporate the, the zoning five criteria.
Oh, correct. Yes, they do not.
All right. Thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that we, that you were in agreement on that point, so, okay. So with that in mind, I guess, I guess we could tackle this any, any, any way you like. We, we could just handle them in order and, and hit the existing conditions first. I mean, I think that one is, is relatively straightforward. That's a waiver we routinely grant. So we could certainly just move in order and then handle the two zoning-like requests if we're gonna, if we're gonna do them all as separate motions. I guess I'd leave that up to the maker of the motion.
Okay. I'll try walking down through these and see where we get. All right. So I'm gonna start with making a motion to grant the waiver for this application for Section 190-279 EE to waive the requirement to show existing conditions on adjacent parcels as appropriate. And in granting that waiver, we use the considerations as indicated in the staff report for that particular waiver. So that's my first motion.
I'll second.
Okay. So that, that motion is made and seconded to grant the waiver requested from Section 190-279 EE with respect to the requirement to show existing conditions on adjacent parcels, parcels, and that being made under that provision and consistent with the, the criteria and considerations outlined in the staff report. Is there any further discussion as to that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That motion passes.
All right. So I'm gonna, I'll move on to the second motion. This is to grant a waiver from Section 190-25 dot A dot one to permit multifamily housing, where a single family is the only form of residential housing permitted in the FUOD. And then in granting these waivers, we're looking at the five specific criteria in the staff report. First off, the relief will not be contrary to the public interest. Specifically, I think that the public interest is served by multifamily with respect to, you know, being consistent with the master plan and the needs of the city. With respect to Part B of the conditions, the special conditions exist that the literal enforcement of the ordinance results in an unnecessary hardship. And I base that on the configuration of the, the lot with respect to, you know, having a little bit of no visibility and frontage for the uses other than this type of proposed use, as well as access through a commercial drive and, and through commercial lots. With respect to C, the relief is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, and specifically that that spirit is that, you know, housing is important in this part of the community, as again, as, as bolstered by the master plan. Substantial justice is done both to the public and to the, the property owner in that, you know, it's the best use of the, of the land and that it supports the needs of the city with respect to, you know, providing needed housing. And the relief will not diminish the values of surrounding properties, specific in that, you know, this development is in the more commercial area of the FUOD with, you know, at least a 300-foot buffer between it and single-family homes, in that there are other types of developments that are similar, that are on the other side, on the Ridge Road side, and, and those have not shown any negative impacts, which, to property values either. So I'll stop there with that waiver, that motion.
Okay. So the motion by Mr. Leclair is to find that the applicant has met the condition for the requested waiver to permit multifamily housing, where single family is only permitted by right within the FUOD, for the reasons specified by Mr. Leclair as to each of the five criteria that need to be met by the applicant to demonstrate that the, the waiver is warranted. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
That is seconded by Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion on the motion as to that waiver request with respect to the multifamily housing? All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
All right. And I'll move on to making another motion with respect to granting a waiver from Section 190-25-A2C1, permit non-age-restricted housing, whereas elderly housing is the only form of housing permitted in the mixed-use area, village area. Specifically that we do allow that waiver based on the five criteria, the variance criteria. First, A, the relief will not be contrary to the public interest. It's my opinion that the, the age-restricted housing is, is not in the best interests of the public, in that having a, a open, that housing open to all ages is, is, is more in the public interest. Second, that the special conditions exist such that the literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship, similar to my motion for the multifamily housing, that the configuration of the site is such that it is really not appropriate for the age-restricted housing with the access and the, the way that it's, it's set up. So I think that that is, that is met, that the relief is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Again, the ordinance here, you know, spirit is that it's, it's a residential-type area that surrounds this and that we're adding more residential to it. Substantial justice is done both to the property owner and to the public, and the fact that we do need more non-age-restricted housing, specifically in this part of the city and throughout. And again, that the relief will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. I, I don't see that the permitting non-age-restricted impacts the property values as opposed to if it were age-restricted, so.
And, and may I just suggest in addition on that point to your motion, that, that we did receive testimony from an individual with, for the applicant indicating their view as a real estate agent, that this would not have a negative impact on the property values, whereas we did not hear contrary.
Sure, I'll add that we have evidence from a assessor that, that there would not be any impact that was included in the information submitted to us.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leclair. So again, Mr. Leclair's motion is to find that the applicant has met the criteria for a waiver from Section 190-25A2C1 to permit non-age-restricted housing, where elderly housing is the only form of housing permitted by right in, in this district, and specifically finding that the applicant has met the five criteria required by the applicant to be met to entitle them to such a waiver. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. That motion passes unanimously.
All right. I'll continue on with he grant, the motion to grant dimensional modification as requested to the density maximum detailed in Section 190-16, Table 163, to allow for a maximum density of 7.07 units per acre, where 1.5 units per acre is permitted. And specifically that the, the board is using the rationale provided in the applicant's site plan suitability report dated August 30th, 2024, and that the application in the report does meet the guidelines for site plan evaluation under Section 190-23F.
So motion by Mr. Leclair is to find that the waiver from Section 190-25I2 and by extension, Section 190-23D with respect to modification of density regulations, specifically to allow a density of 7.07 units per acre, where 1.5 units per acre is the maximum permitted by right, that the applicant has met the criteria for establishing such a waiver and that is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinances for the reasons set forth in the applicant's site suitability report. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Oliver McLean. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That motion passes unanimously.
All right. I'm gonna do another motion to grant dimensional modification as requested to the building story maximum detail in Section 190-16, Table 163, to allow for a maximum three stories where two and a half are permitted. And granting this modification, we're using the rationale provided in the applicant's site plan suitability report dated August 30th, 2024, and find that the application and the associated report does meet the guidelines required for site plan evaluation under Section 190-23F.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair. So that motion is that the applicant has met the standard to allow for granting a waiver under Section 190-25I2, by extension, Section 190-23D, to permit a three-story building design where two and a half stories is the maximum permitted by right, and that the basis for granting that waiver request that is, that is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance for the reasons that the applicant has outlined in their site suitability report. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Hirsch. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That motion passes unanimously.
All right. And then lastly, I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional site plan approval for this application of the Merritt Parkway, finding the plan does meet the approval criteria under Section 190-146D with the precedent conditions and subsequent conditions as indicated in the staff report.
Could you also comment on architecture meeting the design guidelines?
Yeah, and I would add, would that be a precedent or...
I know, it's actually, it's written into that approval.
Okay, yeah. So I'll amend that the beginning part of my motion should read, granting conditional site plan approval for the development of Merritt Parkway, meaning that it does meet the approval criteria under 190-146D, and that the building architecture design is conformance with the Hall's Corner Architectural Design Guidelines. And again, with the precedent and subsequent conditions as indicated in the staff report.
Thank you. So the motion by Mr. Leclair is to approve specifically Site Plan A22-0039, finding that meets the criteria under Section 190-146D, as well as the architectural design guidelines for Hall's Corner, with the conditions as specified by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Hirsch. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Yeah, I believe that is the end of the...
Yes. I think that, those are all the motions that are required, right? There, no, we didn't leave any open items.
Do you want to do another one?
No, I just gotta, just justify the recess.
Yes, please.
Yes, absolutely. I would, a five-minute recess, and that will also give us a chance to let Mr. Pollinger make his way back up here.
... property and vehicles cutting through from state to domain to get ultimately out to Amherst Street and elsewhere. And we did find that problematic, so appreciate the board tabling it. We had an opportunity to talk to the applicant. As noted, he's elected to put a gate which will be closed, you know, enable fire access, but it'll be otherwise closed. So there won't be any connectivity between State Street and Domain, which alleviated kind of our unforeseen originally concerns about traffic issues in the area. So all, you know, traffic for this industrial use will need to come to and from State Street, which was, which is an industrial area, so it seems appropriate to have removed that connection to Domain. So we're satisfied. I don't know as we've reviewed the plan to confirm all the other comments that have been addressed or not, but at any rate, you know, we'd be satisfied with the conditional approval of having the traffic issue having been resolved to our satisfaction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Just one quick follow-up for you, sir. Have you, have you read the stipulations in the staff report? Are you amenable to?
I am, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other members of the board? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to ask for testimony from anyone in opposition or with concern. Please, please come right up to the, to the podium and state your name and address again for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning board members. I apologize for my John Fetterman look. It's been a long day, so, for everybody apparently. My name is Julie Moran. I presented on this project last month. I live at 16 Domain Avenue. My home, which I bought a little over a year ago, is directly opposite of the property subject to the site plan being considered this evening. Again, thank you for your service to the city and you're affording me a little bit of time. I promise I'll be shorter this time, so I can make a few points. Regarding my home investment in this community, I just firstly would like to know why this project should be allowed to waive the architectural requirements required by City Ordinance 190-172. The staff report for this project, as amended, August 30th refers to attached waiver requests that date from July, and those letters were not, in fact, attached to the website, so that those of us in opposition to the plan could, could see those. In introduction to that law, it says, "The purpose of the building design standards is to provide for high-quality architecture that respects universal design principles, enhances the appearance of Nashua, reinforces pedestrian character where appropriate, and is sensitive to neighboring buildings in the broader setting." It's because this board approved two sizable residential multi-unit housing units for Domain Avenue that today the primary character of my street is residential. Many use my street for daily strolls with their children or to walk a family dog. And Domain Avenue was mentioned in the, in the imagined Nashua plan for the city, taking into consideration that, as we've, as has been discussed a great deal tonight and last meeting, the city needs more housing. Domain Avenue presents a prime opportunity to do just that, assuming my street isn't regarded as just some industrial park with just a few houses sprinkled in. Secondly, I'd like to know why the petitioner should be allowed to waive city requirements found in 190-279 EE not to depict existing conditions on a budding lot. I'd like to know whether the position, specifically whether the petitioner plans to cut down the beautiful line of trees on the north side of the property, some of the last tall grand trees that are remaining on my street. Third, and there's two important things we haven't yet been told about this building, how tall it is, and more importantly, what type of operation is planned for this building. As I mentioned, the existing warehouse operation, it's been referenced tonight, includes an industrial shredder which leaks hundreds of bits of trash that blows over our properties on a daily basis. Fourth, currently, a house sits on this property. The previous tenants wanted to renovate the house and remain living there, but was rebuffed by the petitioner. But for now, the property is still residential. Why would the city want this to remain residential? We continue to learn here how Nashua needs more housing. Here's an opportunity for the board to keep a current residential property residential in a neighborhood that has already approved two large residential projects. Lastly, I think someone should tell me what's going to come next, more residential or more industrial for my street and my community to which I'm relatively new to. In one year, I'm moving to Domain Avenue, neighbors told me about a crematorium plant for around the block from me. My neighbor chopped down a beautiful line of pine trees that I loved, right along my property line, and now this. I asked myself, how do I protect the value of my investment in Nashua, in the domestic piece that I planned for when I bought my home in my silver years? I'm wondering if anybody really cares about that investment, the taxes I pay, and the happiness that I look forward to. If it's, if I live in an industrial park, then maybe I should sell to some other warehouse builder. But for now, I support your previous decision to invite people to, to people and families to invest and live on my street. And so, in the interest of all of us who live here, please reject this further warehousing of Domain Avenue. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Walke. I live in Seven Domain Avenue, so I'm a brand-new neighbor here in Nashua. I've been living there since the end of May. Very excited about the location, have a residential area. We also noticed that right across there, you guys approved the construction of a new condominium area. So very concerning for us that we are looking to change a house, a residential property into a commercial area. As it is right now, I'm going to be honest, we see back-and-forth tracks from Amazon going on and off of that property through Domain Avenue, and they go through Deerwood Drive because they put gas in that gas station right there at the exit of Deerwood Drive. So yes, I do appreciate that they did a better traffic study, but let's be honest, they are building on a property that comes out to Domain Avenue, not Eight Street. Let's just please be honest on that. So any traffic study that says Eight Street is going to be fine, yes it is, because that is what that street is for. This will be built in Domain Avenue. That's my first point. Second point is, we keep talking about, yes, they're going to put a gate, they're going to add parking lot. I can tell you, as of this morning, whoever is on that area, because there is another warehouse right across it, they're parking on the street, on that corner between Deerwood and Domain Avenue. Nobody has spoken about that here. So we're adding more capacity in a warehouse, that means more people are going to work. Somebody's telling their workers not to park in that huge parking lot. You can walk by there around 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, there are cars in that corner. I've almost been hit a couple of times there, because I had to come home and then driving back to work, there were Amazon trucks that almost hit me. Where's that on the traffic studies? I don't see that on the traffic studies. Unfortunately, we took pictures, I know I didn't send them to the gentleman's here, we took pictures of the cars there. Five, six, eight trucks, big cars parked on the corner there, coming from Deerwood into Domain Street. Where is that in traffic study? Nothing. Where is, where is the traffic coming from Deerwood when they go and put gas? They're not going around, they don't go back through that and go through Eight Street. They're coming to Deerwood Drive and then go into that parking lot. That gate answer? Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate the gate. That is blocking half the parking lot. That's a look, they're working the whole thing. And maybe it's just because that's the property, they're looking into it, but that's half a gate. So what are we going to do? We're going to put a gate here, and then another hundred yards of non-gated property, so they can keep doing what they're doing now. So again, thank you very much for that. I appreciate the solution, but it doesn't feel like it took serious accommodations of this board. It's just we're trying to do the bare minimum to make this area plausible. Trees, perfect solution, but I'm sorry, but maybe, I'm an engineer, but I'm not expert on trees and architecture. Are they going to bring big trees already grown, or we're going to have to wait 20 years for the trees to actually do what they're supposed to be doing? I'm not an expert. I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but I do want to know that answer. Because one thing is to put a little tree, that costs a hundred dollars. You're going to put a big tree, that's quite a few thousand dollars. Are they willing to do that, or they're going to actually let her, as she said on her silver years, wait 20 years until the trees block the noise? I do hope that you guys have that question. I'm not trying to be sarcastic or petty. I do appreciate the solutions they're offering, but I think those are the questions that we need to ask, because you as a board are approving residential areas right there. Again, new, new residential customer there. I'm leaving. I love the area. We absolute, absolutely love the area. They're building new condos against us, but at the same point, they're telling us, hey, we're going to make noise right behind us, right next to us. All the response that the consultant company did here, there's, the first answer is that this property is an extension of an Eight Street Avenue. Again, they're building on a property that caps Domain. So this is about Domain Avenue, because that is going to affect. That gate is not going to block the whole, the whole traffic in there. Maybe their property, but we need to think about the effects of the whole entire property there. And we're talking about, we have a big parking lot. Why don't the workers use it? They don't use it. They park on the street. We have pictures, took it last week. We have pictures of cars parking right in a non-parking area, by the way, in a corner, all over the place. You, they leave this little bit of space. By the way, when the Amazon trucks come through, that's what happened. So I do appreciate this board thinking, yes, thank you, you gave me an answer. They are giving you an answer, but please, think about the big picture there. You got a residential area, they're giving you the bare minimum. They're not giving you a high-level solution. Let's, I'm not totally against this, but I do ask that the board ask for a real solution. I don't want to be waiting 20 years for trees to grow. Maybe I'm naive, maybe they're going to grow faster. Let's be honest. I'm only asking this board to ask for real, solid solutions. We're not against building maybe future growth for the commercial area, but please, as professionals that you are, I'm not knowledgeable in this matter, I'm just asking that you guys ask the developer to give us real solutions, not half-made done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or with concern?
Can I just ask one quick question?
If you'd like to provide more testimony. And again, these are essentially questions that'll be answered by the applicant's representative.
There was, in the, in the application, there was a reference to a contribution, a thousand-dollar contribution to the traffic equipment or traffic pattern. It just came to mind. Would any of that money be used to put speed limit signs on Domain Avenue? Does anyone know?
Absolutely, Mr. Hudson, please.
So, the answer is no, but we could go.
Oh, good. It's a drag strip.
Okay, well, we, we, if you're asking for speed limit signs on Domain, that's something we can evaluate. We don't, we don't even, we don't, we could do that anytime.
Okay.
It wouldn't require any additional ordinance or anything like that. The money, the contributions requested will go to the corridor fund. What we do is, as developments come along, and maybe individually don't warrant major traffic improvement on the corridor, we accept a contribution, we pool that money, and eventually, we have enough money to do an improvement to improve, you know, traffic flow for, for all users of the corridor. So, in a sense, they have a, they have a small traffic generation, but that's a contribution towards their small impact on the Amherst Street corridor, in which case, you know, that will be, that money will go towards improvements on the Amherst Street corridor.
I see. Little green kids or anything like that?
No, look, you're welcome to put a penny key.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition or with concern? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support of this application? Okay. Seeing none. Would you like to address any of the concerns, sir, that were, that were raised?
Yeah, just a couple of things. As far as the, the waivers for the architectural, we're looking for architectural relief, just because we want to match the building that's there. It's a metal building. We build nice buildings, Charlie builds nice buildings. And it's, you know, in order to meet that, to do that, we need relief. As far as the other waiver, you know, all of this project is basically situated in just two sections of this six-acre lot, and to go and survey all around everywhere else is really not necessary for this project. As far as the trees, you know, we added 13 trees. They're standard, they meet the requirements of the town. They're, they won't be 15 feet tall when you get them, but they will be, you know, two and a half inch ball-and-ball trees. And as far as access, I know this property has a domain, you know, it's a subdivision, and the property does have a domain address. It won't, once the lots are merged, there won't be no access from this property onto Domain. The rest, and the access between this lot and the adjacent lot, where all the traffic is coming from right now and people are parking, will be gone, so they can't cut through from the other Amazon site through this site to Domain. So, so that's what I got.
All right. Thank you. Follow-up questions from the board? Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. Addressing your, your last, your last comment about the concern that people are currently parking over on, on Deerwood. There, there are no fences up there now, so that the people that are parking in your, in the lots are parking over on Deerwood, which doesn't make any sense to me why they're parking there.
I don't know.
It makes absolutely no sense why, why they're doing that. Are you saying that once the fences are up, they will not be parking there?
I, I don't know where these cars are parking, coming from that are parking there. I'm assuming they're not coming from this lot, but from the adjacent lot, which is a, you know, Amazon.
So, so when I'm looking at the GIS, to me, it looks like there's one, two, three access points from that other property, and probably, maybe four access points from that other property, and maybe one from what I would say is maybe your property, just kind of looking at it real quick. Their, the fence line is going to go all the way from your property all the way down Domain?
Yeah. So the, so right now, the Lot 170 has access, the lot that we're merging has access to Domain. And also, they, they have a cut-through from Lot 170 over to Lot 145. And so people are coming down 170, cutting across to 145 and out on the Domain. And 145 has two accesses right there. So where that access is, the access will remain, but it will be gated off, and there will be no access from Lot 170 to Domain. And Lot 145 will continue to remain what, what it's doing now, so.
Okay, maybe I'm just not seeing it properly. Because I just see when Domain, before Domain takes that corner, it looks like there's a lot there on the end. Maybe, that, maybe that's just not your property. Perhaps it's not. Yeah, maybe it's not. Maybe I'm just looking at a different property there. Okay. My apologies. And as far as the trees are concerned, a two-and-a-half-inch ball is a very small tree.
Yeah, it's, it's standard two-and-a-half-inch ball.
So that's a small tree?
It's a small, it, no, it's a, it'll be a tree that starts out, you know, six to eight feet tall.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Leclerc, please?
Yeah, just maybe this is for staff. The architectural standards that are being asked for waiver, one's, I assume is the roof pitch, whereas our standards have a, you know, dual pitch kind of roof. This is more of a flat, or this is more of a shed, right? Just kind of a straight, straight turn, straight run?
Yeah, similar to the building that's already existing.
Yeah, so, but are there other architectural standards, like, like the mid-height, or, you know, a lot of times we have the four-foot kind of stone band at the ground level and stuff like that. Is that being waived or not waived?
I believe they're waiving architectural standards in general, you know, just.
We, we could be specific.
Okay.
I mean, I'm thinking out loud here, but like, you know, we have definitely on these types of buildings required, you know, so I think our standards require like a brick or a masonry or a stone band, right, up, up to a certain height?
In, in commercial uses, a lot of times, industrial uses, I think they're a little more lax, but that's, it's up to you, I mean, you know, if you feel.
Well, I wonder if it's something that the applicant could work with staff to come up with some sort of architectural features.
Yeah, some sort of reliefs to make it look.
The side that faces the residential, there's more than just a metal blank wall.
Pretty standard practice, yeah, we can.
They cut, to come up with something that, you know, at least breaks up the face a little bit and has more materials than just metal. You know, with that, along with the buffer, you know, may have some improvement there.
Bringing some of the residential look to it, or something along those lines.
Yeah, I mean, I think the pitched roof is rather impractical for this kind of facility, and it's a pretty common, common waiver for any park industrial. And just correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the site we're talking about, it's not a residential zone, it's a park industrial.
Correct.
So even though there's a home on it, it's a park industrial zone site. So the, the home is what got the waiver, or the zoning waiver.
As well as all the other buildings, they had to go through a process.
Right. I know that when we did the condos, they required a waiver to do residential on park industrial.
Correct.
It's an, it's an overlay use that dates back to, well, my house was built in this zone.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the mixed-use overlaying, right?
I think that some of the, the housing there, a lot of the detailed single-family actually predates the current iteration of the zoning.
Got it.
So the zoning that was then put may not have been well-tailored to the existing uses.
Although I think the railroad track along that area, the industrial uses were probably there first.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of understand that.
No, and I appreciate, just for clarification from an administrative perspective, some of the suggestions made by Mr. Leclerc, would that need to be forwarded into the waiver request to continue to work with staff, or would that be an additional condition?
I would say an additional condition, like we've done in the past, work with staff to improve architectural features of the building to be, to fit in better with the character.
So it would still be a straight-up waiver and an additional condition, or?
I would actually recommend if, if you intend to grant the waiver or a portion thereof, you would apply limiting language within that waiver motion, so that it's directly tied to the approval of that waiver. If you intend not to grant the waiver, you could deny the waiver and then write in language about working with staff as a condition.
Okay.
So if it's a partial, include limiting language in the waiver motion.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Hirsch?
One, one question about the trees you're putting in. First of all, could we specify slightly larger trees? I mean, I wouldn't imagine incremental difference in cost is that great if you've got to plant them anyway. Secondly, and I couldn't see this on the plan I looked at, is irrigation provided for those trees?
It's not, no.
So it, I guess my big concern is, three years from now, five years from now, if we have a landlord who's not particularly, or an owner who's not particularly concerned, we've got nothing going forward. Am I correct? Do I miss something? If they die?
There's no.
We have no recourse. I mean, is this, is that?
We tend to, we tend to bond landscaping, but.
But what?
For so many years, but if they die five years from now, good point.
They're done.
Yeah, right, right, right. Mr. Hudson?
I guess that begs a question for me. If landscaping is part of a site plan that's approved, isn't that a required aspect of the site plan, such that if trees were removed at a later date, that would be, that go contrary to the site plan approval and.
Right.
Could be enforceable action if they need to be restored.
But really, it's not, I'm sorry, realistically, you're not going to be able to enforce that.
Well, if we go by there and all of a sudden all the trees are gone, we do enforce that. Yeah, we would have them come back and give us a planting plan, a new planting plan.
As has happened before.
Yeah.
Alderman Cleese?
I, I just want to add to that. I, I lived in Cannigate when they developed that whole area, the vacuum place went in, and one of the requirements of it was that they had to put in all these buffers, because they get rid of all those trees. And within six months, they all died. They were brown and dead, and we had no recourse. So, to your point, yeah, they were just all brown and dead. So I'm just saying is that, truthfully, I think it was the fault of Cannigate, they didn't build it in. So to our association and to, I don't think it was through a planning board, I think it was through our own agreement. I don't think, I think it was through the association. So I'm just saying that I don't blame the planning board, I don't blame anything like that, but to those agreements, those are something that can happen. It was a negotiation that we did.
I would probably differ a little, because it's a homeowner's association.
Exactly. I, I don't blame planning board, I don't blame anything else. I blame their, our association for that. I'm just saying is that's something that can happen.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
You have a little more control with an industrial owner that's been there for quite a few years.
It, it seems in this instance that you're, you're going to have some eyes on this potentially.
Yes.
And to, to Mr. Hirsch's other point, though, with respect to the size of the initial plantings, I, I guess if it's anything beyond what's requisite, that would have to be voluntary. I don't know if we can impose something that's stricter than the minimum. But Mr. Hudson, I saw you had your hand up. Did you have something?
Yeah, it was a sort of a separate issue. I mean, first of all, the proximity of the trees to the proposed utilities is also a concern of mine, but it's probably one of our engineering concerns, which we'll address. But secondarily, I was wondering if the board could stipulate that they need, irrigation was required, if that's, you know, stepping a bit too far into, into things. And then, lastly, there was a question about the building height that I don't think's been answered yet, so I would request that to be answered.
All right. From the applicant, Mr. Hudson?
In the height, I have from the applicant, show a horse staff if they know.
Okay.
And I guess, I guess the question for, you know, stipulating irrigation of the plantings, that could be a question for staff as well. And I already forgot my first thing.
Size of the trees.
Oh, trees versus utilities, yeah.
Well, I suppose if they die, they're going to have to put in sprinklers anyways, so.
I, I will just note that in our landscaping stand, we're standards under 19188, there is a maintenance requirement section, and there is a requirement for the establishment of a maintenance program, which addresses vegetation replacement, irrigation, pruning and fertilizing, and insect and disease protection, litter and debris cleanup, and drainage and tree protection if there's a grade change. Now, a lot of these are typically captured within the detail sheets associated with any landscaping plans, and most plans provide irrigation is another opportunity to provide, you know, if there's an outdoor spigot, you know, clearly you can bring a hose around and you can. you know, clearly you can bring a hose around and you can water those things. Typically, we don't bring up this maintenance program again because a lot of that is covered in the details. And you often see in irrigation system in most site plans. So there is a requirement that these trees be maintained. The code does stipulate, you know, provide some information on how you're going to maintain that. I would say that that's not apparent here. So there should be some sort of a, a plan put forth, either just as a detail or more specifically articulated by the applicant of how they would maintain the trees. And then I would say that the board does have the authority, you know, voluntarily, but you could ask for higher caliber trees.
And another catch that we do is we have landscape bonds that we hold for a couple of years to make sure things survive as well. So it's just a little, but that's not something we hold on to forever, so.
I guess, first, are there any other questions from the board for the applicant?
Did we get that height question answered?
Yes, is there?
Yeah, I think it's about thirty-eight feet. It's not explicit, but like the bottom of the slope is twenty-eight feet, and then it's a twelve-to-one slope over a run of a hundred and eight, and that roughly factors out to thirty-eight or so feet. On the high end.
It's not under power lines and stuff.
I have one additional question.
Certainly, Mr. Hudson.
The fence, maybe I missed it, but what, oh, I see there's a silk fence proposed. But is there any fencing in addition to the landscaping, or is the landscaping intended to be the buffer, so to speak?
No, no, we had no, there was no plans for any fencing, no.
Any additional questions?
Well, more of a statement.
Please.
Additionally, I mean, in the future, we're very concerned about that connection, so if there's just a couple of trees, and then the trees die or go away, and then people are driving through there again, that's completely contrary to what is, I'm finding acceptable right now. So I'll just note that for the record.
Yeah, and I would also note for the abutters here, if they observe illegal parking, to let the police department know. It's entirely an enforceable violation, and the police department should be made aware. And if there's reoccurring offenses from a commercial entity, you know, fines can be levied, and, you know, this becomes an enforcement issue. I can't call on you.
No. Alderman Klee?
I'm going to clarify something that staff is saying. Our police don't enforce parking. Our parking enforcement enforces parking, and the problem is our parking enforcement isn't 24/7. And if we call parking, if we call our police, when parking isn't there, we do have some issues with it. So in all fairness to our residents, they're not going to always have coverage to that. So our parking enforcement is trying to get up to par, but there is a frustration for residents and so on during that. So we need to be fair and to be very transparent to, to the national residents that there isn't always coverage for that. Daytime, there's always coverage, but after five and after six and seven and late night and weekends, we don't always have coverage. Our parking enforcement is trying to get up there, but our police no longer has parking enforcement underneath them. But, but in the meantime, if it, if it is bad or in a dangerous situation, our police will come out because they do try to keep the city safe. But just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, thank you. I think if there's no other specific questions for the applicant, it seems like we're maybe heading down a path where we have some things to discuss amongst the board, but, Mr. Hudson?
My question for the applicant, because I'm worried about this cut-through issue, is if they would be amenable to a stockade fence or similar from basically the corner of the building, paralleling the fire access to property line, such that, I think that would serve to provide both a visual buffer to the parking that will be occurring there, in addition to affirmatively prohibit any driving through there. Whereas I'm not, I don't feel 100% that the plantings will do that. The building, the buffering against the building for the plantings, I think that's good. And even plantings between the fence and the roadway, I think would be good. But I'm thinking, thinking a fence, a fence might be warranted either that or, you know, curving that or something, such that it's not a drivable connection in any way, shape, or form.
So you're talking about from where to where?
From, you see the infiltration trench around the building.
Yep.
Kind of where that ends, paralleling domain to the property line. Just such that you won't see the parking lot, well, you might see if you look over the fence, but the fence would, uh, I would leave it to your, you know, decision about exactly where that goes, but just, I like, I appreciate something more than just some plantings to.
What about some rocks, you know, large rocks?
Yeah, rocks, real fence. I mean, I was thinking of visual buffers as well, but yeah, any, any feature like that.
Yes, something to stop a vehicle.
Yeah. I just don't want to, I don't want a passenger car, I don't want anybody to think they should drive through anything where that's possible to do so. You know, drive between the trees or whatever, so.
Yes, absolutely.
I defer to staff for, to work those details out, because that'd be a request that would incorporate it and approve.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing at this point, go into a discussion. I've got some reservations, honestly, only because I think what we were trying to, one of the reasons we tabled it is because we were trying to avoid sort of on-the-fly putting, putting our respective thumbprints all over the plan. And it seems like we might not be in much different of a position this time. It seems like some additional questions have been raised. So whether it's the landscaping, whether it's fencing, whether it's, it's other items. But I'd obviously love to hear the input from, from other board members as well. Mr. Hirsch?
I have a real problem with what's being proposed. I didn't realize until, it was just told it was a thirty-seven-foot-high roof line. That is high. Most of the building, I'm familiar with that park, I'm a real, of course, a real estate broker, I've done a lot of work in that park, on State Street and all that, that most of the building heights, I think, in there, I'm guessing are what, maybe eighteen, twenty feet? You're going to have a, you're going to, I am very concerned about the abutters, or the neighbors in the area with a building that high, that massive, right on, practically right on the street. The fact they're not putting in irrigation tells me there's not going to be a whole lot of concern about keeping the, you know, and encouraging the trees to grow, but the trees aren't going to grow to thirty-seven feet high, I don't think. So it, I'm just starting to think it's a poor plan that's being foisted on the, on the abutters in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Alderman Klee?
I absolutely agree. There's just something about this that just doesn't feel right, that we're taking this. And it's one thing for industrial to, to live with residential, but we have to make it so that it's cohesive. This doesn't feel like it's cohesive. I just feel like there's this giant that's growing out of a residential area, and it doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit. I keep looking at it, and I'm looking at the GIS, and I feel like there's a giant coming up out of the ground. And something's wrong. It just, I felt like that from the beginning, and I'm glad to see that the fence is going up. I'm glad to see that Mr. Hudson talked about putting the rocks in between the, you know, the trees and so on. I don't feel comfortable with a two-and-a-half-inch ball, but the truth is, it won't matter how tall the trees are when you've got a thirty-eight, thirty-eight-foot roof line, because the trees aren't going to make it up that high. They probably won't make it up to one of the windows. So I'm just not feeling comfortable with this. Tabling, it doesn't seem like it would be right either. But if you want to table to see if there's more that can be done, but I'm just not comfortable with it yet. Sorry.
No, thank you, Alderman Klee. I think he maybe stated it a little bit more eloquently than I did, but I think, I would say I'd love to hear more input if other members of the board wish to comment on the matter. But do we table this again? Go back to the drawing board on a couple of things? Or is, are we comfortable doing an up-and-down vote tonight based on some of the additional testimony that we've heard? Not trying to draw this one out, it's already been a long evening, longer for some than for others. But, Mr. Hudson, please?
Maybe a question for staff. What is the height requirement? I mean, is there a waiver, the waiver needed? Or are we waiving a height requirement? Because across the street is the multi-unit that has been approved, and that is two or three stories tall. I mean, that's, that's a building fairly sizable in significance in height.
The PI allows five stories and a maximum height of seventy-five feet.
Five stories, yeah, so.
That's by right.
That's by right.
Yeah, so I don't know how we, I don't know how we put a stricter dimensional requirement on that. I mean, I think if there's an error or an issue with the areas, that we have this zone where we have these disparate uses allowed in the same zone and right next to each other, so I don't know how we remedy that.
From a landscaping standard, you know, maybe on the frontage of domain, opting for faster-growing conifers and installing at a higher height than per the code, you know, that might, and mixing in some deciduous in there as well for a broadening, kind of a buffer, a stockade fence would also help improve architectural standards, at least on that side of the building. You know, all of these things could come together to try and mitigate the presence of, you know, thirty-seven, thirty-eight feet at the high point. But we are really kind of tied in terms of, you know, this is an industrial district, it has industrial standards baked into the code. And there, Mr. Hudson, you're absolutely right, the problem is that we have disparate uses in a district that is not representative of some of the housing that's been there for a long time. You know, we see this in, this is not the first time we've seen conflicts in industrial districts. You know, the change, the shift in the nature, going more residential is kind of leading to conflicts. So not something the board is unfamiliar with.
Generally, the, most of that street is commercial with industrial closer to the airport, for the most part. And residential came in later, a lot of times.
Yeah, my, in that, in light of that discussion, I wouldn't be in favor of tabling. What I would do is I'd rather defer the, you know, working out some of the buffering details to staff who, you know, I've thrown out some suggestions, but I don't, you know, stockade fence, I don't agree, whatever, you know, I think I would yield to their judgment in planning, good planning, in terms of what's the best buffering in architectural standard that should be applied here. I really don't, I really don't personally want to get into that level of detail on the plan, I guess. I mean, I, in terms of the fence, what I was talking about, traffic, that's just a further iteration. Avoid the cut-through traffic, which, so it's, it's another thing, but it's addressing the same problem we discussed before. And in terms of the other traffic in the neighborhood, I mean, I really, I understand and concerned about that, but I don't think that's relative to this application. I think that's an existing site with existing traffic issues in the neighborhood, and that should be addressed another way through some, you know, parking prohibitions, you know, board involvement, park prohibition actions, enforcement, and all sorts of things. I don't, I don't think that this particular development, especially given no connection to domain, could do much more about it other than do that. Have no connection to domain, so those would be my thoughts.
Understood. I appreciate the input, Mr. Hudson. Other members of the board, Mr. Hirsch?
So basically, I might understand because it's allowed by right, we really have no impact on the architectural, the height of the building, because it is permitted.
I think that was my interpretation.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Sam, but Scott, please?
Well, I mean, my understanding is we, you know, can't set height standards, but we certainly can set architectural standards. And it's pretty common, you know, I mean, we've seen several like of self-storage buildings around some of the residential, and we've definitely had significant architectural implications and presentations on those when they were in that. So my, my thought is, you know, this needs more architectural work, you know, heights, I, you know, I see that. The buffering seems pretty straightforward. We attack, we, we often stipulate that, and fences and trees and stuff like that, I think are pretty easy to stipulate. It's a little tougher to stipulate the architectural. So if I had to push it down the road again, it'd be for an architectural improvement that we can see. But I don't know, I don't know how well you can stipulate that.
Getting a sense that the board is kind of on the fence about tabling. What I've been hearing is some relatively significant concerns relative to landscaping and architectural. And if you were to basically vest staff with the power to work with the applicant, you'd be giving us a lot of latitude. Maybe more than we really should be given. And I'm thinking about, you know, statutory limitations on conditional approvals. And I, personally, I'm not comfortable with that level of authority because it's so discretionary. I don't think that, you know, a court would agree that the board is vesting staff with a reasonable amount of authority. I think it's above and beyond what we really should be looking at and dealing with. That said, if the board were to table, we could work with the applicant and being, you know, hearing what you've been saying and having some clear direction on landscaping and architectural changes, work with them very explicitly in terms of trying to bring forth something back to this board that is much more indicative of some of the things that we've heard tonight. And I think that to Mr. Hudson's point, there's, there's some real challenges relative to landscaping on that side and the utility conflicts, and we should really spend some time working those out. Obviously, the building needs utilities to function, but this is also the most exposed and impactful elevation of the building. So how that all comes together, I think we really need to get a bit more granular and work those details out.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, in light of that discussion, I would agree. I didn't want to table simply for landscaping issues particularly, but if there's architectural issues in the board, especially if there's stuff the board wants to see, then I can understand why, that makes sense.
You need waivers for both, for the planning board.
Just if that is the direction that the board wishes to take, if there were to be subsequent submittals, I think one of the issues I was having difficulty with this evening was the elevation that was provided. There's no color, there's very few dimensions on it, if at all. So to that end, I would encourage the parties to try to come up with something that gives a truer visual representation of what the building is going to look like, particularly on the neighborhood-facing side, as well as real specificity with regard to dimensioning. And I would also ask that any landscaping, additional landscaping elements also be so noted. But Alderman Klee?
Yeah, to your last statement, I think the specificity to the landscaping, to the addition to what Mr. Hudson had said, so that the neighbors and to those that have concern know exactly what they can expect. To the comment, to what we discussed about the landscaping plans, you know, the future plans to ensure that they in fact have a plan to that end, to future of that, so that all of that is built in, that we don't have to ask that question, we don't have to put those stipulations in that they, it'll all be built. be built into the plan. And then we don't have to have this discussion again. And they can work with staff and so on to make sure all that is in there.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Klee. One additional question from me for staff, just looking ahead, it looks like September 19th is booking quickly. And we might have another carryover, which we'll discuss in a minute. But do you see this being accommodated at the 19th potentially? I guess it would depend on how many discussions go, but that would be the soonest. I know we have to table to a date certain, if that were the decision of the board.
I have reservations about all of these things being addressed and turning that around so quickly. I don't think that we'd be able to take this at the 19th, having everything fully addressed.
Right. Got to do it right and to give you what you need. We need a little more time, I think.
We would be looking, I mean, is it unreasonable to state October 3rd if someone was to make a motion?
I think that would be an appropriate meeting to table at too. But then we would also be in communications with the applicant. And if we don't think that they're ready by that time, we would recommend that they request a continuance to second meeting.
Okay. No, understood. I just didn't want to make a.
We do need a date certain.
Unrealistic. No, agreed. So, well, I guess it's the pleasure of the board. Someone being willing to make a motion. Alderman Klee?
I'm willing to table this until the October 3rd, to the meeting of October 3rd.
There's a motion by Alderman Klee to table this application until case 824-0070, until the October 3rd, 2024 Planning Board meeting. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Members of the board, the time is 10:52.
These people have been waiting.
We have one more case in theory to hear this evening. However, given some of the lengthy discussion, to get through just two cases, I guess three, if you consider an Aldermanic referral. Does the board have an appetite to continue? Or is this something that we should consider postponing? We've unofficially.
Put an email address on the back of there.
Had sort of a self-imposed curfew. I personally don't don't. Well, I'd like thoughts from the board before we consider the next case.
I can keep going, but.
I feel guilty that they've been here this whole time.
Why don't we take that last one and close up?
I mean, I will say, I've noticed that the crowd has thinned out, so.
And if it's if it's any consolation to the board, the fewer cases we have at the next meeting, the more time we can allocate to a land use code update presentation. So just.
Wow.
Exciting.
Let's keep going.
Let's do it. Let's just bang it out.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hudson.
I mean, our pleasure, board, is I wouldn't mind opening a case here, initial presentation. It starts to get complicated and table it to the next meeting.
So make it simple.
I've been wanting to go another 15 minutes or so and see where we're at.
Yeah, and there's there's several waiver requests. And I it might take longer to read the motions than potentially to hear.
To hear.
I will indulge the board. However, before the applicant proceeds, I'd say brevity is the key word. So please keep that in mind. And again, I think you're not necessarily guaranteed of a decision this evening. If you still wish to proceed, we can certainly go that route. But just be forewarned again, I think you'll agree. I think everybody up here tonight is there's been a lot of testimony. So we don't want to go back to the old days of being here until 1 o'clock in the morning. So, all right. Well, thank you, members of the board, for your input on that. So next item on the agenda would be application at Fort Beard Street, case 824-0150, Area Agency Properties, Inc., owner. Has any member reviewed that application and is willing to make a motion for board accepting jurisdiction? Mr. Leclerc?
Make a move to accept jurisdiction.
All right. Motion by Mr. Leclerc. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate. I'll go super quick, as fast as I possibly can tonight. For the record, my name is Ethan Beals. I'm a project manager at Hayner Swanson, now IMEAG, doing business at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Also with me tonight is attorney Andy Prolman, who I believe the board knows well, and then the CEO and president of Gateways Community Services, Sandy Pelletier. I'll give a quick history of very quick history of Gateways. Subject property is owned by Area Agency Properties Incorporated, doing business as Gateways Community Services. Gateways effectively provides services for the developmentally disabled community. This community includes children and adults with disabilities, children with autism and aging adults in need of long-term care. Gateways itself started in 1981 and has grown to support nearly 2,800 people today. One of these services provided is housing. The conventional approach to housing that has been utilized by Gateways is to purchase and acquire single-family homes and then use them as shared living models. Those shared living facilities are supported by direct support professionals professionals who provide the occasional support of residents. Gateways purchased the subject property located at Fort Beard Street in 1990 and has used it to house individuals with disabilities since. However, in recent years, the rising cost of single-family housing has provided has posed a challenge in purchasing homes that either do not require a significant update or are areas that are are in areas that are beneficial to their client. Subject property is located at Fort Beard Street, map 68, lot 142, and is located in the RC Urban Residence Owning District. It is abutted by a mix of duplexes and multifamily residential buildings in all in all directions. Subject site today contains a single-family dwelling, small parking lot and yard area. Access to the site is provided via a shared driveway easement over the abutting property just to the north of the subject site. And the existing dwelling is serviced by city sewer, water, by Penetra Water Works, gas and overhead electric and telecommunications lines. The proposed project, as you can see on the master site plan, the existing dwelling has reached the end of its usable life and Gateways has made that decision that it was not viable or cost effective to try to update the existing home. It's being proposed to demolish that house and construct a new nine-unit multifamily residential development residential building. That building will have a 3,313 square foot footprint and will be a two-story building with a basement. The density required for this project was granted by the zoning board back in December 12, 2023, to construct up to 10 units of a multifamily residential building. This is a first-of-a-kind project that will be owned and operated by Gateways. All of the proposed nine units are one-bedroom apartments. The current plan today is to house seven clients of Gateways, and then the remaining two units would be utilized by Gateways staff. In addition to their other roles for Gateways, they will provide some support for the other seven residents, things like a monthly community event for the building or weekly check-ins with all the residents. I do want to clarify that this staff will not be providing 24-hour care, medication administration, or behavioral health services for the residents. Access to the site will continue to be provided via the shared driveway easement north of the property. We're proposing a six-space parking lot behind the building. An effort was made to provide a more formalized, safe and well-defined 22-foot wide driveway than what currently exists today. Because the seven of the nine units are for clients of Gateways, the project qualifies as a community living facility, which are permitted by conditional use permit in the RC zone. That was submitted, the conditional use permit criteria was submitted by Andy Prolman. I'll skip summarizing those in a continued effort to try to be quick. I'm happy to revisit those, but that letter was in your board packet. Anticipated traffic to the site is fairly minimal, two to four deliveries, Amazon UPS a month, one to two visitors a week, which would consist of family or friends. There is a resident job program, which would pick up a few residents for supported jobs. These are usually part-time jobs, so the pickup would be later in the morning, and then the drop off would be back early in the afternoon. It's important to note that the proposed clients, so the seven proposed clients that live in this building do not drive, nor will they own cars. The only people living in this building that would potentially drive and own cars are the two staff members that would work there. A traffic memorandum was prepared and concluded that per the ITI Institute of Traffic Transportation Engineers Land Use Code, the development would generate approximately five vehicle trips during the various peak hours. That memo does also state that due to the fact that the majority of the residents do not drive, that number is likely overstated. If we can switch, Scott, real quick to the renderings. Gateways has engaged La Valley Brunzinger Architects to assist with the design of the proposed building. Based on some preliminary comments back from planning regarding the aesthetics of the building, La Valley took a deeper look at the neighborhood and updated the exterior of the building. I'll note the updated design you see today includes revising the footprint to break up the front road-facing facade, so not the main entry side, the main entrance is on the back. It also reduced the floor-to-floor height to reduce the overall height of the building. The majority of the siding will consist of horizontal vinyl clapboards with the gabled ends and second floor entry above the entry canopy will feature eight-inch board and battened style siding. Currently, we're showing a standing seam metal roof in gray. The caveat being this is clearly the design intent, but when we get to construction, depending on pricing and material availabilities, this might may change slightly. Included in the board packet today was also three letters of support, which I feel are important to bring up. The first one is from Harbor Care via Welcome Light, Inc., who owns 12 Auburn Street. It's the property directly behind the proposed development. And more importantly, this is the property over which we enjoy our access right easements for that shared driveway. The second is a letter from a parent of a child with autism who has been receiving services from Gateways for over 30 years. She talks about moving her family to Nashua so that her son could access community transportation as driving was not an option for him. She finishes her letter by discussing how independent living is a right for everyone. And this initiative by Gateways is a significant step to helping that right be realized by many individuals with disabilities. And the third is from the owner of 14 Auburn Street, which is one behind the previously mentioned 12 Auburn Street. They also enjoy access over the shared driveway. The proposed building will be serviced by Penetra Water Works, city sewer, gas and overhead electric telecommunications utilities. We are proposing a small infiltration basin, taking advantage of the good soil conditions on the site to infiltrate runoff back into the ground on a site that previously did not have any. We provided a landscaping plan in our site plan. In general, there are a few trees planted along the southerly shared property line and a mix of shrub and small trees along the front of the building. A site lighting plan was provided, including four wall packs and two 12-foot light poles in the back of the parking lot. All will be downcast, full cutoff fixtures to minimize light spill over onto abutting properties. Waivers, we're here tonight seeking four waivers. The first one is of 19279 EE, existing conditions on nearby lots. This is a waiver request that the board hears very frequently. Providing that additional survey is cost prohibitive and does not add any real benefit to the project. The second one of 19221 requires underground electric service to service the new development. Currently, the existing building and all of the developments in this neighborhood are serviced by overhead electric and telecommunications utilities. We're just proposing to maintain that. The next one's a little bit more atypical, which is 190198, requiring 1.5 spaces, parking spaces per unit minimum amount of parking. We are proposing six parking spaces, as I previously mentioned, where a minimum of 14 would be required by code. As discussed briefly previously, the proposed development will likely house seven individuals with disabilities and two staff members. So out of the nine total people, the two staff are the only two that would drive. Other anticipated traffic to the site is very minimal. One of the primary reasons that Gateways chose to redevelop this specific site is due to its close proximity to the downtown core and city and Nashua bus routes. Walkscore.com, which is a site that measures the walkability of any particular address, scored at a 90, which classifies it as a walker's paradise, that daily errands do not require a car. Gateways believes that the six parking spaces is sufficient to serve this development. Constructing a larger parking lot just for the sake of meeting the code would drastically impact the site programming and would realistically construct a parking lot that wouldn't would go unused because it's larger than what they need. The Gateways clients, who already do not drive, will benefit from the excellent walkability of the site. The last one is section 19089A, requiring light levels not to exceed 0.2-foot candles at any property line. Pretty simple. The shared driveway that we're using is on in a abutting property. We intentionally chose to light that driveway to help with pedestrian and car safety up the driveway. I'll note the other three property lines, including the fourth additional property line, which is on the far side of that shared driveway, all meet the 0.2-foot candle requirement that is here in Nashua. In summary, I hope I went quick enough for you, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We do think this is a first-of-a-kind project that a lot of people around the state have been watching. As you may have seen recently, Senator Sheen did was able to secure $1.5 million in funding for this specific project because it is a mission she believes in. We've reviewed reviewed the staff report and are in agreement and are amenable to all of staff's conditions, including to the satisfaction of Joe Mendola's letter, his comments. We think that we can meet those to the satisfaction of DPW fairly easily. Be happy to answer. Myself, Andy, or Sandy would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Beals. And I apologize. We weren't trying to rush you in any way whatsoever.
I was going to speed it up anyways. Andy's bedtime was an hour and a half ago. That was a promise I had made to him.
All right. No worries. Questions of Mr. Beals from the board? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I just was wondering, I mean, it's you say that residents don't have cars and that's for this intended use. I just want to know how that's positively affirmed. Is that part of the, you know, stipulations of being residents, you don't have a car? And this being conditional use, I assume if use changed later date, that would go away? That's only being granted to this specific use of the site, which has not really required the parking?
So a couple of quick pieces. One, Gateways is not a commercial real estate group. They want they have they buy their properties and they own them and they typically don't sell them. So they're looking at this as a big, long-term investment for them and their clients. The nature, and Sandy, please jump in if I misspeak, the nature of the clientele that will live in this building do not drive. Simply, they are not able to get a license for whatever their disability is. And so by the nature of just them being clients and the specific clients that Gateways will select to live in this building, not including staff, they do not drive, nor do they own cars. And that, sorry, the last piece on the conditional use permit, I believe that is correct, but I would yield to staff on that piece.
Go ahead.
Yeah, hold on, it's coming back to me. Come back to it.
It's okay. Let me know. Let me know.
It'll be back in a minute.
Certainly. Alderman Klee, please.
Thank you. This is my ward. I'm very familiar with the with the area. You did pick a good area. It is walkable to downtown. You're real close to Main Street, and you have a convenience store there. You're real close to the fire station. Holman Stadium is just a stone's throw away, so there's a lot of entertainment and so on. And so I do think it's a it is it is a really good area and it's actually not far from the Gateways Community Office just down the road on Canal as well. But as far as like the parking is concerned, I know you shared the driveway with, is it 12 Auburn Street? I know it's you have you have a shared driveway, but are you sharing parking?
No. So one of the pieces that I kind of went too fast through.
Yeah, I know.
We made intentional efforts to both provide a formal, that entry today is in poor condition. The driveway is old pavement. The parking lot, if you had driven behind the building, it's not well-defined. You can't tell where our property ends and where 12 Auburn starts. If you actually were to have driven back there, you would have seen some handmade signs by 12 Auburn basically saying, hey, these are our parking spaces. Don't park in them. And so an intentional effort was made by us to provide a more formal entrance driveway that's wide enough for two-way traffic. And then I have what's it's small, but it's a two-foot crushed gravel island at the back of our parking lot, so that there's a well-defined break right at our property line between our property, our parking lot, and the abutting property, abutting parking lot.
May I?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. I guess my only concern is with the six parking spaces, and I do understand that the the clients, the residents that will be there will have. understand that the, the clients, the, the residents that will be there will have visitors, family members that will be coming to, to visit and so on. And you will have two staff members that will also have people coming and, and visit and so on. So you have nine people living there with only six parking spaces and definitely two people living there. That's just my concern. I'm not, it would not be a reason for me to say no, but it's just a concern, and it is a very tight area, so six parking spaces are going to be six parking spaces with not a lot of room to maneuver. I'm very familiar with that area, and the reason why those people are putting up signs is because it's, it's almost like, lack of a better term, is if you take two inches over, there's now only one parking space, you know?
So we, if I can respond briefly-
Sure, please, yes.
So, we, we, we had, I had extensive conversation with Gateways. When I first did my first prelim site plan, I saw six, I said, oh, man, the planning board is not going to like this. And so, but we, we looked at it, and Gateways, and they have not, they don't yet manage a building this big. However, based on their experience and my discussions with Sandy and her team at Gateways, it's very unlikely that you're going to have, if there's seven residents, all seven families coming to visit them at once. That very rarely happens, if at all. I'll also note that the, the two staff, as I had mentioned, they'll, they're gonna have other duties for Gateways. Their, their job is not exclusively to the residents in this building. So, yeah, they're gonna check in with the residents, you know, on occasion in the week. They're gonna plan a community event for all the seven residents to get together, have a movie night, or some other community building piece. But they're also going to be driving to the other Gateways properties that they're providing support to and trying to do their other roles for Gateways. So your, your point is absolutely well-taken. The other benefit to Gateways continuing to own and maintain and operate this facility is that they're going to, if there's going to be parking issues, they're going to have to work it out. They're not selling the property, they're not developing and then having a renter buy it. Gateways enjoys a long-term relationship with the abutter, who you're talking about directly behind us, who also wrote a letter of support for us tonight, and there is plenty of communications back and forth. They have been a great neighbor to us. I, I hope that we've been equally as good of a neighbor back to them.
May I, just one more comment?
Certainly.
Thank you so much for doing this. And, and the neighbors that you, you talked about, I'm seeing them also doing improvement and so on to the, to the property. I, I am seeing some improvement to that area, so thank you, guys.
Mr. LeClair, please.
Um, just, just a comment, maybe if I'm reading the plan right, it looks like to me, if you had to add a couple more spaces, you could. You might have to lose a shed or something on the site, but, like, if it, if it does appear that it needs to functionally be better.
So I, I will say that there is a pretty significant slope on the south side of that property. So the main body of the site is fairly gentle. There's actually a ten-to-twelve foot slope literally in, between the southerly property line and then basically the setback on that side. The back corner of the property is actually held up by a tire retaining wall, so if you need tires, let me know, because we're gonna have plenty of them after this. So to answer your question, if it was a question, it, it would be a little bit harder to try to grow into, towards the south, south side of the property, because we then would be competing with the hill. I am showing a smaller, what's effectively a three-to-four-foot retaining wall to help me make up some grade. Any ability to grow into that hill is gonna require a much more significant and engineered retaining wall that is likely, probably not realistic and cost, and cost-effective for this property.
Okay.
The, the, more of a comment than a, than a question, it, it looks like there is some available on-street parking. There's also some proemissions on certain sections of Beard Street, but much like any other residential area, though, it looks like that would not be prohibited in, in this area, so, Mr. Hudson?
Did it come back?
Yeah, so, it came back to me. So, I mean, you specifically noted there wasn't twenty-four-hour medical care. I'm assuming that's just the nature of the residents, or they're independent enough that they don't require the overnight care.
Correct, yeah. So the, the goal of, I'm not gonna have the correct phrase, but these are individuals who predominantly can live independently with some minor supports. That, that is really the goal of this house. It's not an intensive support house. It's, these people, that, these individuals can live mostly by themselves, but they need some extra check-ins that, that may, they need a ride to work, to a supported work program. They need to have a community event so that they're brought together and can socialize with each other. It's, that is clearly the intent of the population that will be living in this house.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Certainly.
Just a question that I had as we were developing the engineering review. Does ten Auburn have any rights to the use of this driveway, shared driveway?
So, and I'll, I'll yield to Andy, but I, I do not believe that they do have rights to this driveway, no.
Yeah, I just, I noted because they have, they have a gravel lot and whichever washes off of that, and it'd be a nice situation address, but if it's, if it's not, if they don't share access, then there's probably much, not much that this development could do to address that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andy Prohlman, Brett Prohlman. To directly answer that question, my title research on ten Auburn does not find the same easement rights that we have over the twelve Auburn property.
Thank you. Thank you. Alson? All right. Additional questions from the board? Seeing none at this time. It does not appear as though there are any remaining members of the public that are not associated with the applicant. Zoom, Zoom was on earlier. Was there anyone on Zoom for this case?
Doesn't appear to be.
No?
Do you have a, is that announced?
No.
All right.
Just you, Bob.
Just me. All right. Thanks for checking. All right. One last chance, members of the board? No? All right, we're gonna close, close the public hearing. Members of the board, huh? Thoughts, questions, concerns?
Looks like a great project to me.
Good project, yeah.
We saved the easy one, maybe, for, for, for last. If we had known, all right, no, all right. I, I would, I would agree. So, there's no further discussion. Remember, the board willing to make a motion?
Can I just ask one?
Oh, certainly, yes.
Quick question, staff. So, I noticed this, this is just in terms of structuring the votes. This is described as a conditional use permit and site plan. So, I'm just, because, Scott, you mentioned the sort of the, the difference of process. Traditionally, we would always, you know, separate those into two different, you know, not just two different motions, but typically two different applications. But I just want to make sure we're not, we're not proposing to do something different for this application.
Just trying to streamline reports-
Yes, absolutely.
Because the site plan is, the, the conditional use permit needs to be granted in order to grant the site plan approval. You would grant the conditional use permit first, and the waiver, and then the site plan.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. With that, with that clarification, is any member of the board willing to make a motion on this application? Mr. LeClair?
Sure, I'll, I'll start with a motion to grant the conditional use permit for this application, finding that the proposal is consistent with the standards detailed in section one ninety dash forty-six B through E, and the project narrative does satisfy the CUP approval in one ninety dash one thirty-three F.
All right, so there is a motion by Mr. LeClair to grant the conditional use permit. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. LeClair, would you like to continue?
Yeah, next I'd like to make a motion to grant waivers specifically for section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE, also with the not to depict existing conditions on abutting lots, section one ninety dash one ninety-eight A to allow the six parking spaces, section one ninety dash two twenty-one C to allow the development to be serviced by overhead electric and telecommunications, and section one ninety dash one, dash eighty-nine A to allow the light level to exceed point two-foot candles at the property line, specifically along the driveway, as was indicated by the applicant. And that, in granting these waivers, we are utilizing the criteria indicated in the staff report.
All right, thank you. A motion by Mr. LeClair. Is there a second? Second, Alderman Klee. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. LeClair, would you like to go for the trifecta?
Yeah, lastly, make a motion to grant the conditional site plan approval for the development of the nine-unit multifamily at Fort Beard Street, finding the application meets the approval criteria outlined in our site plan NRO, section one ninety dash one forty-six D, with the precedent and subsequent conditions as written in the staff report.
All right, thank you. A motion by Mr. LeClair. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for staying late.
Anyone was at all interested? There's just the review of the tentative agenda regarding, oh, Larry gave me a look, I, I don't-
You're pushing it.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Barland?
I, I would make a motion, having reviewed the tentative agenda, but no proposals of regional impact.
All right, motion by Mr. Second by Mr. Green.
He said that without breathing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at eleven twenty-one.